May I get the floor?
You give Brian the authority.
Right, you get the floor. Call the meeting to order.
Thank you.
And open it with planning and zoning.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
As you got in your packet, I submitted our budget. It's basically the same budget as it was last year. Moved a couple of things around, but it's basically a $5 decrease as proposed. I would like, if the building trend continues as you also received in your packet, I would like to increase the building inspector from part-time to full-time. Last year, the building permits are going crazy. At the end of this quarter, we project that we'll have 200 building permits issued. We are currently, as of Monday, at 3 o'clock, we were at 175 permits issued. We've had a significant amount still continuing this week. We currently have, out of that 175, eight of those are new homes. So the new homes are still going. There are, Cheney Properties has sold their approved subdivision to Chinburg Builders and they were supposed to close last week, but it's been continuing now until the 1st of December. That's 36 lots.
Excellent.
Chestnut still has nine lots left to be built on. There's not many left to be sold out of that nine, but there's nine lots left to be built on. And then there's five on Kelsey. And then there's a subdivision that's been in the wind for six months now in a different part of town that still needs to be approved, and that would be, also in my opinion, a very desirable location. So there's a lot of new homes still going on. I don't know how the market's gonna go in the spring, but I would like the board to be able, and us to be able to have that flexibility that if next summer, it's still crazy like it was and has been continuing to get crazier, that we're able to increase Bill's hours from part-time to full-time.
What's, you gave us the number for the permits. What was the permits last year?
Last year at this time, there was 111 permits.
And what is it right now?
175 as of Monday. But Bill said he's gotten 12 so far in this week. So, Karen?
Last year, wasn't Bill working someplace else too?
Yes, he was working in Stratford. He was all done Stratford at the end of this year.
Okay, so he has the capacity to pick up extra hours.
He's all done Stratford, January 1st. That was getting too busy, so they also have to, they're also going to do something different. It was too much for, there wasn't enough time.
Couldn't go back and forth, yeah?
No. They need another person, more hours.
On your budget line, oh, thank you. On the budget line of legal expenses?
So I went over on my legal expenses last year, as the board is aware. But this year, we kept it at the 30,000 proposed because we're already a few months, we don't foresee any issues, so, I mean, you never know what's gonna happen. So we kept it at the 30,000, but we're in hopes that our most recent legal problem has hopefully slowed down for a while, so we kept it at the 30,000. Last year, it was 42, we went over, but we kept it this year at the 30,000.
Your turn, Scott.
Can you or Julie tell the rest of the ABC members about what we did with Bill's position regarding benefits?
Sure. So what the board did as of, I think it was November 1st or October 1st, they adopted a policy that any regularly scheduled part-time employee of 32 hours or more can buy in 50% of health insurance. So Bill has now done that, so he purchases 50% of the cost of health insurance and the town pays him the other 50%. It affects Bill and I believe one other employee.
So does that change if he goes full-time?
Yes.
Then it would be what?
It would be the same as ever.
100 or what do we do for?
It's... 25%?
Well, no. It's 100% if you have a single plan, and if you have a two-person or a family, it's 25% of the difference of the premium between either one of those plans and the single plan.
But if it's just him, it's 100%?
Correct.
Do I go from 50 to 100?
Julie? How much more expense will it be for him as a full-time employee?
It's not reflected in his budget retirement?
Correct, it is not reflected in there. The retirement, it wouldn't be too much of a difference. And Karen, do you know what the calculation on the additional salary is?
12,000.
$12,000, so it's, call it 12%, it's 11.38. But it, so it would be 12% on the difference for the retirement system?
The difference of what?
The 12,000 in salary.
Is he already...
Well, no, I take that back, sorry. It would be 12,000 plus what he's making now, 11.38% of that.
Is he covered, was he covered by?
No.
So he's getting retirement on all his payroll?
Not, no. He is not in the retirement system right now.
But he will be if we increase his hours to full-time.
Correct.
So the incremental cost to the town would be the retirement on his whole 42?
No, 'cause I don't think 42 is what the full-time salary would be, is it?
That was my next question.
I would say it would roughly be 48, yeah.
Okay, so it's 11% of the 48, okay.
'Cause that was my question, 'cause the FY18 approved is 42. What you're saying increases, your request is by 10.5, but the request for 19 from the department head is still 42.
Correct.
She, right, she did not put in the money for a full-time...
So she did it in the description?
Correct.
But not in the...
Oh, that's why this isn't... So it's not even in...
Sorry, that's, right, otherwise those costs would already be in the personnel budget.
Personnel budget.
So really, your request for 19 is really 52,500. Is that correct?
And when I did my budget, I did my budget in August, and I, I understand and completely agree that if the building trend crashes, there's no reason for him to be full-time. I understand that. That's why I want the flexibility to say, in the spring, if we're still really busy, can we increase his hours? Because, like the rest of us, I don't know what's gonna happen with the market. I mean, you know what I mean? I wouldn't want to be paying for a full-time building inspector either. I mean, I understand that completely. But I want to be able, for the board to be able to agree that, okay, next spring, if it's still crazy busy, let's make him full-time.
Well, I mean, if the crime rate goes down, do we lay off police? If we don't have as many fires, do we lay off firemen? No, I don't think so. I think we pay for good employees, 'cause you really don't know what the future holds relative to how many houses, how many permits, how many crimes, how many fires, whatever, whatever. We have a good employee in Bill Boop. Question is, question is, you know, what's it gonna take to retain him? So far, I think we've treated him very well. And I think we need to be prepared to say, based on what we see, that we need a full-time building inspector. We have a good one onboard, and he's worth what it's gonna take to retain him and not lose him, and what's it gonna cost to replace him? I mean, that's, you know, if it goes down...
Yeah, he's gonna look for something else if he doesn't...
We always have the option to say, hey, guys, you know, we're gonna have to reduce your hours or we're gonna have to do this, and they're gonna react however they react or else they stay onboard.
And another thing we always have the option to do is give them different tasks to do. Just like every department, you know?
Yeah.
If you find yourself, yeah.
All right, fire department, they always keep busy doing things too, you know? They help the maintenance guy and, just what we do.
Julie, did you put money in the health insurance budget for this to go full-time?
No.
So if, I'm only saying, if we're in agreement to do this, then we need to increase Julie's budget in two areas, one, health insurance, and two, retirement.
Somewhere between $8,500 and $10,000, give or take. I think it would be an additional under $10,000.
So for the health insurance and the retirement?
Health insurance, retirement, and a couple other, you know, long-term disability, short-term disability.
You get workers' comp and some of those stuff.
Yeah, workers' comp. Although, we're paying workers' comp on him now, obviously.
Right.
Could we have, you or Joanne, give us a breakdown of what those?
Sure, yeah.
And maybe send it to us?
Yeah.
We will know exactly what the salary increase would be and the retirement and all the other charges.
Just to play, and what other things it affects within your budget.
Just to play devil's advocate, I understand the position it's going up, but we've also had requests for other positions during this budget season. I mean, obviously, there's consideration, I think, as a police person, right? Asking for everything.
Yeah.
In libraries and...
In the library.
The library's asking to increase the hours of their 35-hour-a-week employee.
So it's like a balancing issue.
I understand.
It's nice, when you look at it by itself, it's great. When you put it all together...
Package.
Yeah.
And just to let you, the rest of your budget, many guys know, as of August 15th, that we at the Board of Selectmen adopted a fee schedule for our office and the fire department's office, and to date, since August 15th, we've collected $500 on those new fees in our office, which is pretty good.
$500?
In additional fees.
Oh, additional fees.
That we never would've charged before.
Oh, okay.
So, which is great.
Question that's not really associated with this. What happened to the building that was next to the university building?
That deal fell through.
It fell through. I thought for sure it was gonna go through.
Yeah, she acted, when she came to the planning board, it was like it was a done deal.
She was a health person.
Therapist.
Just the one on the corner there?
Yes.
Sarah Rupples.
Maris, Maris Building?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Mr. Ben?
One at the end of Tibbetts Road.
Yes, that one.
Yes, you have a Tibbetts Road.
Okay.
Don't start that.
Karen, what is the likelihood of the number of houses that Chinburg will be able to build on that piece of property, seeing as how it's been mined down to the water table?
36, all approved.
36 are all approved?
It's been approved for two years now, and Walt Turcini owned it, and he's marketed it to sell, marketed it to sell, and Chinburg bought it. They're closing the first tomorrow.
Is it a cluster development or is it, it's a cluster?
36 houses.
With the common sewerage for all or...
Individual.
Individual.
Karen, where is that? Is that the one in back of that flat piece on 125?
Yes.
How do you get to it?
Off of Pancam Road, so if you take a right at the water testing plant?
Yeah.
It's down on the left, it's a right away, right after a small little house that just had an addition built. It's a 50-foot right away right in there.
So there's no, there's no frontage on 125 to the house?
The commercial lot is 17 acres, I believe, and that's the frontage on 125. I think it's 17.
There's no way through that property of the houses?
There used to be, but now there's not.
Okay.
Nope.
What's the increase of valuation that you've done?
So, to date, it's, cost of construction so far in fiscal year is $3,021,213.
Say that again, $3,021,213?
To date?
To date, this fiscal year.
Fiscal year?
Correct. And it's a 58% increase over last year.
Can you tell us how much you spent so far in legal this year against that 30,000?
I cannot. The town administrator might be able to.
Not off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that. Well, yeah.
Our legal bills, and correct me Julie if I'm wrong, they don't, we don't get them in at the end of every month. They're usually, like when Julie did this...
They just got October's.
And...
And October was essentially nothing. I know.
That's nice.
Yeah.
So, according to certain media outlets, the recent decision has been appealed. Do you know anything about?
I haven't physically read anything that says appealed.
No, it hasn't been appealed. We can assume that what he meant by his three most recent documents to the court is that he's asking for a motion to reconsider.
But that's not an appeal.
But that's not an appeal, correct.
So we still have some...
Yes.
Ongoing expenses with this?
Correct.
Well, he's logging in some time too, because he's also asked that Howard recruits himself and go to a new judge, which means there's a whole startup process that that happens. I don't see Howard doing that, so...
And this is exactly what he did the last time we took him to court. He went after Sharon, he went after the judge. This is nothing different than he's done before.
But the case didn't work. The last time, I don't believe the judge stayed right on the case.
No, I think that's one of the reasons it took the judge so long to make his decision, because he wanted to make sure he covered everything.
Yeah.
Is that better than selling property in there?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted...
But now he's announced he's gonna sell.
Correct.
I mean, he announced that publicly.
And he announced that it's...
That he's gonna sell, move to another community.
And he's announced it's on the market, and as of noon time, it has not been on the, it's not on the MLS.
Just that property, his house, everything?
Just that property.
By the way, the additional $3,021,000 is $90,500 in tax revenue. Should keep one of those, like, running tag...
Yeah, that would be...
In 70,000 in fines.
Those neon lights.
In 70,000 in fines.
In how much?
If Peter, if we collect from Peter, 70,000 in fines.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, you collect it eventually.
And I will let the board know that the building inspector and I spent, as the board knows and Jupin's lover knows, countless hours, all different hours of the night. The building inspector was chased into the woods and stuck in the swamp one night from one, on that enforcement issue, so he helped earn that 70,000.
Has the town got a copy of the order yet?
Oh, yes.
So, was the 70,000 including the legal fees or were the legal fees a separate?
No, the fees are separate and are somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000.
'Cause we can only get back certain legal fees, we can't get back all. 70,000 is the 5.50 a day.
But if he doesn't pay, we can attach the property, correct?
Yes.
If he's selling?
Well, as long as you get in there for it, you settle.
Well, the problem is, you gotta get the attachment order before it sells. And it's correct, otherwise you've got nothing to attach except his piece of property on back of Spalls Road.
True.
Well, no, that doesn't belong to the VRC.
That's incorrect. It stands in its own merit. So it needs to be some kind of an attachment put on that really soon.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay.
We're on it, we're on it. Julie and I are both so patient people. We don't see it.
So Karen, the legal fees, that's just for that? There's nothing else going on with you legally?
Nothing legally right now that I'm aware of. And I'm also here to talk about the fair as well, when we're ready.
Oh, yeah.
So as everybody probably knows or remembers, the fair had a warrant article last year for $8,000 for fireworks, and it was voted down. I'm a representative from the fair commission committee, asking if it would be possible to, for the board to support fireworks, and if it's possible that we do a warrant article with a possibly backup warrant article, allowing the fireworks to continue with donations. Our ideal way is to have, you know, funded and possibly some donations. Or if the board would ask for $4,000 this year and $4,000 next year, and then have fireworks next year. They would like, the committee would like fireworks, however we can figure it out.
How would you do the, what two warrant articles would you do?
I don't know.
Because...
Because of the no mean run.
Nobody, so I don't...
I'm just the messenger, I'm just...
You'd do better than me.
I mean, I guess you could, I don't know, obviously, we have to talk to the DRA. You could have a warrant article, one warrant article that says, raise and appropriate $8,000 for fireworks. And that fails. But then you have a separate article that says, raise and appropriate $8,000 for fireworks, all of which is to be collected through donations. Right, I mean, that's kind of what you're getting at?
That's what they're getting at, exactly what they're getting at.
So the no means no is a standalone warrant article, and then there'd be the other warrant article, I think, but...
Why do you have to have both of them?
Because last year, it was voted down by 100, roughly 100 votes?
I think what she's getting at is why not just say, no, raise more money?
Because the fair committee was afraid that if it got voted down, they wouldn't have anything again. And the several people on the fair committee, the majority of the fair committee, wanted fireworks.
But you could probably just raise the money and have fireworks without a warrant article.
So just, but it doesn't operate in that space, not as a separate warrant article.
I personally, the one who fundraises for the fair, cannot get $8,000 for the fireworks because I can get $8,000 for fireworks, and then I can get $5,000 for the fair, and I physically...
Right.
No, I'm not, I don't think, that's what I'm saying.
No, you're saying something completely different. I, yeah, if you wanna do that, it's up to you guys. If you wanna do that, that's great.
I'm just saying, you could stick in that, and then you could fundraise for as much as you can, and then draw what you need to, and if you don't leave the whole amount, leave that and let it lapse into the designated fund balance.
Fine, I would, I just, I can't fundraise, so that's great for me if that's what the board wishes.
I'm not saying that's what the board wishes, that's just...
It's an option, it's a great option. Put it under rec or something.
I kinda liked fireworks too.
I think it's a good...
They were nice, they were really good. There weren't a whole lot of people that stayed for them.
But I think people watched them throughout town as well.
Oh, maybe, yeah, right.
Yeah, some people were up on the Hill Road and North River Road in their car and...
Right.
It's another thing for the town to do as a town, as a community type thing. That should be going on ice cream.
I think if it's more publicized too...
Yes.
Then people will stay or come back.
How much was it to run the movie?
$2,000 something.
Yes. 'Cause that was not, the fireworks had more people than the movie, but it was more money too.
Yeah, well, it depends on the movie too.
I know. They were sort of experimenting the first couple.
Right, it takes time to build things up.
Plus, the other thing is, Durham doesn't do anymore?
Durham does not do fireworks to my knowledge.
They don't do it anymore?
Well, there's a...
The Rotary stopped?
Yeah.
Rotary stopped, but they're looking at starting back up again.
Yeah, okay. Well, Rotary's picked up quite a bit too, so...
Well, Rotary didn't fire for the last five or six years, or fireworks in Durham, was talking about the Rotary, not Town Durham.
Right.
And when we stopped, because we got to a small number of people, we're starting to grow again. When we got to a small number of people, the town did not take it over.
Right.
Town said, no, they gave it, gave it up, and that's why we picked it up. But I have to be honest with you and tell you, I don't, this is just me making this statement. I don't think it's gonna fly this year, 'cause it's real close to our other big fundraiser, and I don't think it's gonna fly, 'cause I don't think we've got enough people to spread out to both of them. But that's just my take right now, nobody's voted one way or the other.
So what are you asking for this year?
So we would like 8,000, we would like fireworks for $8,000.
Okay, and then, not this year, but last year, you've got 2,500, so you're not asking for that?
Correct.
Okay, so just the 8,000?
Just the 8,000.
'Cause you're gonna live off your trust fund?
Correct.
Can't refresh my memory, but why did we do a warrant article for that last year? Just because, just because?
Just because.
But was it new, was it new to you?
No, but we did fireworks, but it wasn't a warrant article.
No, I mean, the 2,500 you were talking about, right?
No, no, I'm talking about why did we do the warrant article for the fireworks? And it was just because.
Yeah.
The last fair, we didn't have it. The fair before that, we had them, right?
2016, we had them.
How did we get that money?
That was the 250th.
So the 250th committee paid a large portion of that. The fair donated very little.
And the rec commission maybe paid some?
And the town, the...
Pitched in some?
The town pitched in 2,500, I believe.
250, still has money.
How many warrant articles are you anticipating?
Right now, we're at 19.
If you...
That includes us eight?
Four. If the 250th wanted to give money towards the fireworks, it would be less than we had to raise.
If the Heritage Commission wanted...
Yes, the 250th is gone.
Heritage Committee, committee no longer exists.
So maybe if the fair committee asked for donations...
Would be a good use of funds.
We couldn't give you the whole thing, 'cause we got some of it already set aside for the different things. We're getting somebody to make benches out of the mastery?
I think that's impressive, absolutely impressive.
But yeah, if the fair committee came and said, hey, if this goes forward, would you consider a donation to the fireworks fund? 'Cause if we went through and put it in for $8,000, you could just spend as much as you needed to to get it to go, and then not spend the rest of it.
Great idea, thank you. Thank you.
And according to this, you've got about $2,200 left after you had expenses for 2017 fair? So that's enough money to get you... You had $58,2668 in the June, and then you had $35,9587 for expenses?
This isn't right.
What's wrong? What's off? I guess my question is, is $2,200 enough to get you, 'cause it's a revolving thing?
Are you saying you didn't spend $3,500?
Or are you saying you spent way more than $3,500?
No, our balance is higher than this.
Is that wrong?
Did you have some revenue that isn't in there maybe?
Transferred in, we had a deposit. The lead fair made a deposit, 912 or 913, and I don't think this reference, I don't think this shows this.
We'll get the exact...
We can talk about that tomorrow? Yeah.
Can you work that out with Joanne and tell us what that is? That's my only concern, that $2,200 isn't very much. So if you can let us know what that is?
We have about 55, if I remember, my memory, it was like $5,500 in our fair balance.
Because I thought the fair makes you a little bit of money each year, so...
It does, and there's been discussion back and forth from the chairman of the trust fund. He doesn't agree that we should make money, but the fair committee's thought is to save it for a year that you can't, you know, to have a little bit of money in the bank for the years that you don't, so...
Well, not only that, but I mean, if you wanna grow the fair...
You need money to grow the fair.
And maybe do some things?
You've certainly had, I think, requests to grow the fair.
Yes.
You know, add the petting zoo, add more vendors, add things, more things for kids, so...
And they all cost money.
And that you were looking at, and I don't know if that's a fair thing, but looking at something of refrigerated trailers, so you don't have to keep biting?
Fair thing.
So...
That's between the fair and the ad commission, where you just split those costs.
Okay, well, this is a thought, so...
No, thank you.
If you can try to let us know how much is actually left?
Okay.
Maybe there's some revenue that wasn't, I don't know, I'm not sure. I'm all set. And let us know if you get down, if you don't have a quorum, 'cause we're gonna send somebody down.
We better have a quorum.
Did you call? Did you beat them?
No, I only know of two, I think, that are coming, and possibly three.
So if you don't have a quorum, is it possible to get a draft?
Oh, it's gonna get voted on.
But if you don't have a quorum, you can vote.
Don't shoot, well...
Well, if anything, if we could have a draft, so we can at least take a look at what's being proposed to the trust fund?
Yes, oh, we'll be up, don't you worry.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Right on time.
Who is the fire chief next? Your hot seat, chief.
There he is.
There he is.
Okay, nice face. I'll just cover the fire department real quick and give everybody a quick rundown of where we're at this time, um, last year's budget. Some things did change with the staff. Um, I know there's some new people here, so I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. So my position's full-time currently. I'm here Monday through Friday, eight to four. Obviously have after-hour meetings, we have trainings and stuff like that at the end of the day. We have a full-time lieutenant as well that works Monday through Friday, but his shift is ten to six. Um, and then we fill in the rest of the shift during the week with part-timers, so. The part-timer works two days, six AM to six PM. It's a rotating shift, so if on week one, they work Monday, Tuesday, week two, they work Wednesday, Thursday, it just rotates through the four of them. Um, doing it that way, at the end of the month, every fourth week, they work four days in a row. But then it's different pay period, so they're only working the two days a week. As you can see in the pay work that I submitted in September, in fiscal year two thousand sixteen, we had twenty-six on-call firefighters and EMTs and currently this year, um, this number's changed now since September, we have fifteen. But every year, it seems to be dwindling down. Everybody's getting busier and busier, so. One of the goals and objectives that I have is to continue looking at staffing levels and see where we're at, um, and looking at different ideas. I think all of the CCOs is doing that right now. All the other departments that I talked to, Barrington's in the same situation, Epping, Newmarket, Nottingham. Everybody around here is having the same issues. We're relying more on each other now and doing a lot more automatic, mutually, mutually in general, so we'll have the manpower and have the equipment and apparatus we need. Um, just this week, we had a rollover at six AM on Wednesday, yesterday, and we had one truck roll out of here with one person. Um, McGregor was responding as well and they had three people for the accident. Luckily, the person got out of the vehicle before we got there and there was no injuries, but that's something that the fire department kinda lives, not all the time, but um, it does happen when we don't have the staff and, um, but at the same time, during the day, when all the call members are busy at their full-time jobs, that's, whoever's on shift most of the time is who's here. So my, my biggest concerns is always safety of all the members, so that's why we've been looking into the automatic, mutually and stuff with other area departments. Um, I really tried to work with a zero budget this year, but last year, the board instructed me to look at our pay, uh, our pay and how we work with it. One of the things that we're trying to do is keep the personnel that we do have. Um, in the last two or three years, we've lost three or four people to area departments that they're going full-time. Um, we lost two to Durham, one to Dover. Um, it does make me proud that they grew up through our department, they got the training, they have the experience and that.
Doesn't help you much.
But it doesn't help when we do lose them.
Keep them.
Yeah. Two of them started elsewhere, but then they came here for the positions. One of them was here for fifteen years, so. And you know how it is back in the day, working in the police department, you lose that, you lose that education, experience and all that, so. Um, one of the things either the board talked about was the pay, so. I did a pay study last year, we looked at it, um, I reached out to numerous departments through CCOs chiefs, the agency that, or the mutually district that we have, and working with them, I got a lot of good feedback, um, and we were pretty much one of the only departments that pays our call members a flat rate. Every other department pays per certification or experience level or how long they've been on the department. So I worked with the board, we looked at that and we did up to pay rate for a lot of the members. Um, by doing that, it also brought up the part-timers, the lieutenant and myself. So we're doing a lot better with pay. I just don't know if that's gonna be the overall answer because a lot of these people are looking for the full-time job with the benefits and start of their career, so.
Excuse me, and they're, we're losing people to other departments cause they're paying more?
They're paying more to other departments. Maybe not right away. As a probationary firefighter in some of these departments, they're not making the money, but the overtime's there, the details are there, especially Durham. Uh, Dover, there's overtime. All the career departments that are in our area, Exeter, Dover, Durham, Portsmouth, they have a ton of overtime and that's where they're really making their money. Um, and also what I've been hearing the most is the shift schedule. Um, for my lieutenant, who's, you know, mid twenties, he's working Monday through Friday, whereas a lot of the full-time departments, you're only working a twenty-four hour shift. And then you're off a day, you work twenty-four hour shift and you're off four days, so. I don't know too many people, but there are people who have another job, another full-time job while they're doing that. Um, so that's another way that they're making the money, so.
I think that's the biggest problem, isn't it, chief, is that the departments that are twenty-four hour, full-time compliments
Yep.
are giving people twenty-four on, twenty-four off, twenty-four on, um, what is it, forty-eight off, something like that? And it rotates and that's why you lost your lieutenant to Durham, and I know that, cause I know him.
Yeah.
And, um, he can do another job, part-time job.
And did I hear correctly, we had to roll a truck with one man?
Yep.
Was that the EMT truck or fire truck?
Fire truck. It was a car accident. We were on the rescue on that one. There was just one person. That, that doesn't happen all the time. I looked through the stats today. Um, we have about thirty calls from the timeframe of six AM to seven AM. Um, me coming up through, I've been here since two thousand four, I started as one of the first full-time firefighters here. What I've always tried to do is to make this place better than how I had it as I was coming through. I don't know how many fires, how many car accidents I've done by myself, because that's how it's been. So throughout the years, as I'm looking at the department, I'm trying to fix those issues. At the time when they made, and I wasn't the chief, I made the shift schedule change and we started at six AM. But a lot of the call members are getting up at six o'clock and they're, you know, helping their family out, getting ready for school, getting ready for work, whenever they're traveling, so. The six to eight o'clock until I get here, there's really not too many call members around. So it does happen, but the, the amount of calls was very minimal when we did that. There was only like ten calls at six o'clock to seven o'clock in the morning. Um, but when I looked at the numbers today, it started to really spread out again. That's something, I've been looking at the numbers a lot, uh, to see what day we have the most calls, what hours we have the most calls. The lighting is really kinda keeping the same, the six AM to six PM is our busiest time, seven days a week. But it's really seven days a week. A couple of years ago, you can look at it and say every Thursday is the busiest and it was kinda the same, Thursday, Friday, every year. Now it's really starting to spread out and those numbers are starting to equalize. So Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday are about the same numbers, so. And that's what we've been doing with the, the staffing, is trying to stretch their hours enough that we can get at least two people here to staff the trucks because we don't have the call members that we used to have. So getting back to the pay increases, that's why our budget's going up four point five percent this year, is working with the pay increases at the time when we did it. The call members, we had enough money in the budget, um, but as the part-timers get their certification, um, when I asked for those positions, that was the lowest number that I could come up with for the town to get the positions and now they're starting to get their AEMT, they're getting their firefighter too, so we're getting more advanced firefighters, but, um, we need to, I would like to up the budget so that we could pay them for those certifications, so. Part-time firefighter line, we go at fourteen thousand dollars, um, four hundred forty-one dollars. And that is because there's four of them and all of them are getting the different certifications.
Chief, did we have a discussion one time about if we, if we pay for all this training, et cetera, et cetera, that we have some kind of agreement for, for retention or else they have to reimburse us for the training?
Yep, we talked about that.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to do that. Um, it's just my opinion that I don't think that's gonna, we'll get the money back. We'll definitely get the money back. I don't think it's gonna help, um, keep with retention.
I don't think it's gonna help retention problem, I agree, but.
Yeah, it's definitely a way to get the money back. Cause what he's talking about the classes, it depends on the class. Um, the firefighter one class right now, I think it's almost nine hundred dollars. And the AEMT class is twelve hundred dollars per person, so. And that's what the books pay for the class and, I thought you had, sorry.
So are you saying, okay, you can take this class with the understanding, we're gonna pay for it as long as you stay with us for two years or something like that?
Exactly, then they would have to reimburse us the cost of the training that we've put in for that period of time.
Is the Fire Academy funding these now or they, cause they're having budget issues, aren't they?
Yep, so recent, the last two years really, um, the Fire Academy does two Fire One classes a year, pretty much, depending on the funding. And then they do two Fire Twos. They just opened up a facility up north, so they're trying to split the classes throughout the state of New Hampshire. We have a, uh, the CCOs chiefs have taken over the, the training for this area, working with the academy, so if they do a Fire One or Fire Two class, we hold, hosted at one of our departments, we all work together trying to get the equipment there. Um, it was being held with IU, but now we've taken that over, so that's one class, but that means the North Country misses out on a class. So then they'll might, they may do that in the fall and they'll give North Country a Fire One, so it's kinda back and forth. But because of that, there's been a high need for Fire Level One, that's your basic class, you need that, you know, so. They've run more classes and they haven't had them funded before. So you go from with a firefighter level one class of eight hundred dollars over three thousand dollars. Um, I just don't send the members to those because of the cost of them. Um, and then we usually, I, working with CCOs chiefs, I'm in that group, so I know when the classes are coming and I can kinda hold off and be like, let's wait on this class. In three months, we're gonna get another one anyway, so we'll just do that. It'll cost a lot less money.
So is it the, what, the great facility up north that they use?
I forget the name, it just opened, it's, uh.
No, it's not the great facility. Great's been open for a while.
I wanna say, I think it's Madelbrook.
Oh, okay. It's like the junk grave?
No, no.
No, okay.
And, and I know you've done several salary studies around, I mean, when we look at, or when you look at Madberry and you look at, Nottingham, whatever, the, the smaller, the smaller towns, where, where are we with them relative to the salaries?
The salary scale?
Yeah. Are we lower than everybody or?
No, we're, Madberry doesn't have any part-time, full-timers right now. It's all, uh, call members. Um, talking to their chiefs over there, they're definitely looking into that. There's about four members that actually run calls in Madberry right now. Um, so I know that's something that they're struggling with and they're dealing with that. Nottingham is, we're probably about the same with Nottingham for the pay. Um, but I know, although we've been losing a lot of people, we've actually been very fortunate. Um, and nothing against Nottingham Fire, they can't keep anybody up there. Um, it seems like every other month, they're losing somebody to another department. Um, and I know for the past probably year, two years, they haven't been fully staffed cause they can't keep anybody. Um, I know Newmarket's been going through the same thing and it's kinda the area where you work. Newmarket works a lot with Hampton and North Hampton and they've lost a lot of guys to those departments. We work a lot with Durham and Dover and we're losing guys to those departments, so.
How do we compare to Epping?
Epping, I did try and get their, uh, salary range and I didn't at the time while we were doing the study. I never ended up getting it. Um, I think their part-timers are about the same as us. Um, and it.
Are they on the forty-eight schedule?
No, they do two twelves. And then they're off at two days and then they do two twelves again. And, and that's, everybody in the CCOs is having this issue with staffing and every chief is kinda coming up with another idea to work on it. We're all communicating, we're all talking. I think us and Barrington are the closest together. We've all done the same thing and maybe they hired a fire chief first, we hired a firefighter and lieutenant, they hired another, they hired a firefighter and it was, both of us had two people and then they hired a third, we hired a third and then they hired weekend and then we hired weekend, so we're the closest with Barrington.
Yeah.
Um, but everybody's trying their own thing to see what is gonna work the best and we're all, we're all talking all the time to see. You know, if I talk to Epping, cause, uh, we do the nighttime coverage, um, where you get the twenty-five dollar stipend to work six hours. Um, and every other department now is doing that and they, some people are handling it differently, so they're paying a minimum wage to stay at the station. And then when there is a call, the pay gets bumped up to the call pay. Um, I looked at that, that was gonna cost the town a lot more money and for the most part, we can fill our shifts, so I don't think it's necessary to adopt that right now.
So you think it, yeah, it's working the way you're doing it, or would you think about revamping like the, the whole thing and going to like the twenty-four? Cause there's, there's shifts here that you have no scheduled shift, you know?
Correct.
Right. Would it actually be worth looking at changing that or?
And I have.
I mean, have you thought about that and going to the twenty-four?
Yep.
And that regular schedule and what would that?
At last year's budget meeting, I asked for the two part-timers.
Yeah.
And at that time, I looked at what we could do to do twenty fours.
Right.
With one person working a twenty-four and then, um, augmenting with part-timers and the nighttime coverage. It was gonna cost over three hundred thousand dollars just to have one person on twenty-four seven.
Three hundred dollars additional?
Three hundred thousand dollars additional to this budget.
To the budget, oh wow.
And that's what the retirement costs and, um, the benefits and all that stuff.
Going to twenty fours?
Yeah, we would've needed, we would need three more full-timers to make that work.
Wow.
And then, and when we lost, uh, our last full-time lieutenant, I thought about just taking that, those hours and breaking them all up and making more part-timers and, I think the town gets a good value for the money when we break them up into part-timers, but at the same time, I feel like I kinda lose that a little bit cause I'm seeing that now with our part-timers. They're working two days and then they disappear for seven days and then the next person comes in who's been gone for seven days. So the communication and for them to come into it, not knowing what just happened for seven days, um, has been the challenge. A small thing we did, the, the whiteboard in the OC, we take notes every day and make a list. We have a meeting now in the morning. I have a meeting with the part-timer when I get here at eight o'clock. At ten o'clock, if a lieutenant shows up, we run down the day and that's kinda how we start our days now and if there's anything big, we just leave it on the board. If there's events going on, we have a spot for that. If there's any equipment out of service, we have a spot for that, so. It's kinda the running board that we're using to help that situation, but, um, yeah, I, trust me, I'm trying to look at everything. Um, and the, the biggest thing that I don't like is the six o'clock to eight o'clock in the morning, cause there's only one person here. Um, and trying to work with the sched, you know, it's hard cause there's seven days that I'd like to cover. And so nothing evenly works out for the shift schedules and stuff. Uh, and right now, with the four part-timers, our Sunday shift, uh, it's one part-timer and then we have a per DM person, so. It's whoever's on the department that would like to take that shift, whoever's firefighter and EMT, both, um, gets the first chance at the, at working that shift, but there's been times where we had just an EMT working with the part-time firefighter EMT and there's been just a firefighter working with them. And that's cause of the seven days and the way the schedules work out, but it, at the time, that was the best schedule because now we have coverage on the weekend as well.
What happens, walk me through, if you don't mind, what happens when one man goes out in the truck? Then, then you put the on-call people, I mean, you, you exercise trying to get an on-call person also to respond directly or, or, I mean?
So, um, we all work pagers, uh, and we also have our phones. We have a subscription with I Am Responding. It's a company that sends us text messages. Uh, on that phone, it's a one-button push, you hit it, there's a TV out in the, um, the bay that shows everybody. So if there, if people are responding and that's, this was kinda adding to who's coming to these calls, you never know and being the day crew, you're sitting, are we gonna wait here five minutes?
So he doesn't know if he's gonna get anybody or?
We're gonna wait here for five, ten minutes and not respond to the call when we do have two people that we can respond.
So he gets to the scene, it's him in the truck and?
So, um, before they leave, we have that TV, so you look up at the board, you don't see anybody. Go over to the truck, you sign on with dispatch saying you're waiting and then, uh, you wait a little bit longer and then dispatch does a re-tone. Uh, so they tone up the whole department again.
So your response time goes up?
Yep. You wait, see if anybody pops up on I Am Responding, see if anybody talks on the radio. If you get nothing again, then you go on to the call.
The thing is, if he gets there and he can't handle it, he can ask for mutually, can it?
Correct.
Or she.
And then you're waiting.
Well, yeah, but meanwhile, tick, 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 tick.
Well, meanwhile, cause he's waiting.
The guy that you have to worry about.
Yeah, and that's the thing, you're either waiting on scene or you're waiting in the fire chief's.
Waiting someplace.
Yeah, so that's why I've worked with Epping. We have a automatic mutually agreement with them from six AM to six PM. So if we get anything from George Bennett Road South for a car accident with injuries, a fire, a brush fire, a water rescue, they send an engine with whoever's on shift as well, so. You're going from one person and one truck to one person, or to possibly three, four people with two trucks there, so it.
And George Bennett North is Barrington?
No, I haven't worked with them yet.
Oh, okay. Can I ask one question about the part-time firefighters? You're increasing by fourteen thousand and that covers for F Y nineteen, the anticipated certifications that people are gonna get?
Correct, they're in the classes right now.
So you might have some that don't do it and some that might do it additionally, so you might be off a little bit or?
Everybody's in classes right now, so they should have everything this year.
Okay.
You talked about automatic mutual aid and you talked about Madberry being really thin. How is that impacting your staff and are you doing mutual aid with Madberry as well?
We are not, uh, the most we do for mutual aid is actually Durham Fire.
Okay, so that doesn't tie you up too badly?
No, no, Durham Fire, we've done thirty-eight mutual aid calls this year. This week alone, we've been to Barrington three times and Epping once. But most of the time throughout the year, it's going into Durham and helping them out. Just like us, if they get a call and their whole crew leaves the station, they have nobody, you know, all the full-timers, they do a callback. Full-timers live from Lee to North Conlin, so they don't know who they're gonna get as well. They're also using the I Am Responding app to see.
Any changes with the, the McGregory ambulance, Durham ambulance, who is going to a new location potentially? Any changes where you anticipate in terms of that move or anything else for them?
I really haven't heard much about them, so I don't know where they're moving to or any other plans. I personally don't think it would affect us that much. If they move, if they move from downtown, it might actually help us for response times.
Okay.
If they stay in town, that's where they are now, so I don't think it'll be affecting us either.
Well, they're definitely moving out of where they are, so.
Did they say when that was?
It's something they're working on. I see it in the Ted, Todd Sillik's news thing, so they're doing research into it. But I don't know if they've finalized where they're going though, but I just didn't know if you had any conversations with them.
I forwarded the email to Bill Cody too.
Obviously, they're gonna have to consider the area that they cover, something, you know?
And they definitely do, I think McGregor thinks about all the communities as much as, uh, where you're, they come to us, it's the second most. Obviously, U N H and Durham, so we're definitely one of their bigger contracts that they have, but they think about everybody.
Got a couple of questions, Chief.
Yep.
How are the holiday wages, they don't seem to ever get used?
No, in talking to Joanne, I've asked her that in the past and...
What's it for, for, can you explain what it's for?
It's for any of the members, it's, I think it's actually for the holiday pay. If they have the day off and the money comes from that line item, as far as I'm aware.
That's likely, it never happens, like, it never gets used, it's unfortunate.
I think that just comes out of the normal wages.
That just comes, holiday pay just comes out of the normal wages. Maybe this is if you have a full-time employee who has to work on a holiday and then some kind of double pay comes in, maybe that's the line that it comes on.
And I definitely should talk to Joanne about that.
Well, I was gonna say, it's, not that I'm trying to take it away, if you're trying to hold on to people and there's opportunities, if they...
And we have a crew work on Thanksgiving.
Exactly.
And they're gonna be working Christmas Eve and everything, so we're gonna have...
So is that in there that they have get paid extra for working the holidays?
It's the town policy.
So that should be from that?
I mean, quite frankly, maybe it has just been coming out of overtime, yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Check with Joanne and if it is, that should maybe be rolled into the regular?
Yeah.
If she's not using it.
Well, why it could be used, that's for sure. And getting back to your night shift incentive, I know it's working okay. Is the staffing changing in the night? Is it pretty much the same crew?
In our fire department, what I've seen through the years, one person is stepping up a lot. They leave, the next person takes their spot for the call members. We definitely have the same group that steps up, does a lot of them. And then there's probably three or four that will take up some of the shifts next month, might not take as much. But the next three people step in and take those spots. So probably it's, all of them have gotten filled.
Okay.
But recently, we've seen where it's the night before and we're still trying to fill it, but we get it filled.
Can you fill in the A B C about the current state of your, I don't know, is it your command vehicle?
Yep.
And the thoughts in terms of dealing with that in the first place? And I know, we're probably getting rid of the number in the C I P, but can you just give me a little background in terms of what happened and?
September is the month that all of our vehicles get inspected. Yep, they're all different.
Same vehicle, different?
So the police department was getting rid of their two thousand and ten Ford F one fifty. At the time, I was looking for a command vehicle, don't live there now. And I want to be there for the department during sixty-five days a year. And I do do a lot of mutual aid calls at night, I do come in a lot at night for the bad reps and stuff, so. The board was nice enough and the P D was nice enough to give me the two thousand and ten Ford F one fifty. I used that, tried to set that up as a command vehicle. It is a truck, so it's kind of hard to set up the way I would like to and actually get some good use out of it. But it was working fine when I did the inspection on that truck. It failed because there was holes the size of your foot, pretty much in the cab corners for rust. Took it down to Coaster's Auto Body, they looked at it. And at first, it was just gonna be some cab corners, and they said the outer rocker panels were bad as well. So we're looking at about two thousand dollars. That bill, when they cut into it, turned into a five thousand dollar bill because the inner rockers were rotten as well. The frame's got some rot on it, but talking to them, they were gonna spray foam the, the frame to make sure it was gonna last. Like you said, it was a P D vehicle, so we did do a lot of time sitting on the side of the road, the engine running and not going anywhere. But for me, it was working mechanically, I didn't have any other issues other than that. But I think that truck's had a new transmission placed on it as well. So I went to the board and asked them what they would like me to do. They said that we should try and sell it. I have worked with Coaster's and I'll be coming to the board on Monday night to talk about that. But the two thousand and eighteen bid list did come out and I'd like, with the C I P, that the money is there to get a two thousand and eighteen Chevy Tahoe. And if anybody wants to discuss this afterwards, there's a command box in the back that I can get into more detail. But the big thing now is accountability, we need to know where all the firefighters are. And having that box in the back allows me to do that. And when you're doing a second or third alarm fire that does happen quite often, you're looking at fifty, sixty firefighters that you need to know where they are at all times. You need to have good radio communication, and in our town, we have extremely poor radio communication. I have a picture of that, if anybody wants to see the antennas and how things are set up. But that's something else that we're trying to work on. So having that vehicle there with that radio in it, the wattage is a lot more, so it allows me to get out better. And I can hear the firefighters on the ground for firefighter safety if anybody goes down. So that's something that we're looking at right now. The vehicle, the ballpark vehicle number that I got right now is thirty-eight hundred, or thirty-eight thousand dollars. I'm working on the box and the lighting and radios and stuff, so. But I have talked about some methods and the C I P. I'm just trying to figure out the numbers at this time because the state bid list is just, here's a vehicle, this is what it is. But there's things that we can delete out of that package like the park rescue from Alphazirin. Something I said?
Yes, something you said.
Something you said.
Maybe they're like forwards and that.
Well, the meeting starts right now, so.
I wondered why they were...
Where's Karen, Karen should've been sitting there.
I know, she was with him, wasn't she?
Yeah, I thought so.
Okay, so.
We never get company.
So that's where we're at right now, I'm just trying to get the price lower and lower on the S U V and coconut.
Can you give me a shot about what's going on with cisterns?
Yep, at the last meeting, at the last vote, the town voted to allow us to expend some money on Tamrac and James Farm. I worked with Julie a little bit, I got the old R F P on Riverside Farm Drive because we want to do maintenance on that. The biggest thing is dredging it, cutting away all the bushes and stuff. And this is why we don't accept dry irons anymore, we accept the cisterns. So I looked that over and that was well over my head. I'm not an engineer to try and find out depths and how much water these things hold. So I've been talking to Jay Stevens, the town engineer. We met over the summer and looked at, went out there with Karen and walked the properties and everything. He's in the process, he's got all of his measurements right now. And he's writing the documentation out for me so I can do the R F P, so hopefully we can start that in the spring. And talking to Jay, I just don't know if we can do both of them this year. There was more to it than I thought when we got out there and looked at it. Especially with Tamrac, the pond so close to the road. And we gotta look for safety of the residents, and so we might have to add a fence and figure out the elevation and how we want to do some of that. So we're working on that right now.
Would it be cheaper to replace the ponds with cisterns and be done with the pond issue?
Um, the last price I had for a cistern, if we did a concrete cistern, depending on the digging part is the, the real problem, is about fifty thousand to eighty thousand dollars. The last pond that we dredged, which was Riverside Farm Drive, was a little over twenty-two thousand, I think.
And what are we spending on the cisterns, none? I mean, not the cisterns, the ponds, the reason.
For the dredging, how, how often do you have to do that?
Um, this is the first time that we've done Riverside and that development's probably a little over twenty years old, twenty-five years old. Tamrac and James Farm, I think, I have the numbers, the years, I think it was in...
James Farm would've been the eighties.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a cistern on the Chippewa thing off Pinkham for the thirty-six or not?
Chestnut Way?
No, no, no.
The new one?
Pinkham, the Chippewa one, used to be Cheney's.
It hasn't started yet.
Well, the new development.
Didn't start yet, but in the plan, is there a cistern in there?
Yes, there's multiple.
Oh, there's multiple?
Yep, the ordinance, if it's over five houses, then you need, if it's over three houses, you need one cistern. If it's over that, you need two, and then it gets up to, I have to look at the ordinance. But I think it's over fifteen or ten houses, then it's three or up to the fire chief.
So at some point, those become town maintained?
Correct.
After a period of time?
Yep.
So hopefully, those are gonna be in the C F E next year then, I guess, in terms of?
Those are fairly new, the cisterns.
Okay.
The ones new to the town. The cisterns are really, Langley, I think, is one of the older ones, we've had some minor maintenance issues with that. And we've worked on that and fixed it, but we haven't seen many issues with the concrete cisterns or even the fiberglass. So it's, we're still kind of figuring out what we're gonna need to do for maintenance-wise. They're supposed to last fifty to a hundred years someday, so.
So cement one is different than, like at Eller Osborn, those are plastic, aren't they?
Those are fiberglass.
Okay, so that's totally different in terms of how long that's going?
Yep, the, the, um, cement ones that we have in town are just like your sewer tank.
Okay.
But I've been working with Mitchie Corp and a couple of other places. We've had some issues that, like Langley, where the inner seal, because it's two different pieces of the tank, because they gotta get it over the roadway. That seal over time has, we've had issues with that. But I've worked with Mitchie Corp where we designed a different tank that has multiple seals. They paint the inside and then everything's bolted together. And it's a, it kind of comes in as a different layer, instead of before, it just kind of sits together. And now it's, um, multiple seals as they get. I don't know where they're looking for it, I'm not an engineer.
My offer still stands for fucking Langley.
Yep.
Almost at end.
That's it? Real quick, the other one that I'm geared for is the E O C budget, and nothing has changed on that. This past year, we've upgraded a lot of things in the E O C that actually worked out great for the windstorm we had. We had purchased a smart TV in there, so we could hook up a laptop right to the wall and everything's on that. We've added a couple more whiteboards in that room, we've got some more maps of the town, the flood plains of the residential neighborhood. So if we have to go door-to-door, we have more of that stuff. The big thing that I'm trying to do this year is work with the state and do a tabletop exercise, so we can utilize that room and see what more we need, because there are grants out there that, if we do the tabletop, then we can purchase some, some more electronics for that room, a telephone, a conference phone, like some of the other things. But I want to do the tabletop to actually see what we need in that room.
I would like us to do some more training, more frequent training on the E O C, you know, roughly once a year. I keep forgetting about all the things you can do in there.
Yep.
And it's fantastic, truly, it's fantastic system. I mean, I would like to see us, you know, at least two or three times a year, have some kind of exercise where we all sit down with the laptops and go through it again.
Yep.
We get, I saw in the newspaper today, the governor has requested disaster aid for the October storms. Did we get a request, because they have to, what, get permission first and they ask us how much we have for expenses?
I think we were already asked to gather our expenses, that's what you do first, so they know that rises to the level of...
So then they can declare, so we've done that and we're just waiting to hear from the city?
And just for clarification, you are still the director and Karen's still the assistant, right?
Correct. I cannot do paperwork without Karen.
Please.
She's your joke.
I'm good.
Go your own.
Thanks.
Thank you again for the invitation to come for the Budget Committee and the Board. Let me preface a few things, I think everyone around the table knows what McGregor does. And I'm gonna start with two thousand and sixteen and kind of give you a picture of two thousand and seventeen. Two thousand and sixteen, as you'll see from sort of that memo that I have, was a great year for McGregor. Was kind of the confluence of, a lot of issues came together, both from profitability, if you will, from income, from patient billing, from a lot of changes that we made that we were able to afford to buy a lot of very expensive equipment. We purchased a new ambulance, it's sat out here a few times because we rotate the fleet. Just to give you an idea, that topped out at about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for equipped new ambulance. So it was, it doesn't come in expensively to do that. All of that came about because of sound financial planning and capitalizing on McGregor's part and the finance committee's part to be able to set those sums of money aside and be able to outright purchase an ambulance. What happened over this year, and if you're reading that memo, and I'll cover some of the salient points with it, is that as demand has gone up and it has increased dramatically for McGregor in all the communities. Lee, maybe not so much, I think it's been pretty steady. But as you know, being a regional ambulance service, one affects the other in looking at formulas and how we apportion different things. For many, many years, we have had a paramedic program that, by special exception, allowed paramedics to be paid on a stipend basis overnight, and overnight is six P to six A. And as things started getting tight with schedules, we started serving our paramedics. And it became very clear that they were able to go out and work elsewhere for much more money. And we owe a great obligation to all the communities that we serve to provide the finest care that we can. And so when doing a market analysis, we decided that what we had to do was go to paying them straight hourly for that time. So what is resulting and where this memo kind of went to is to let all the communities know, and it's just the time for everyone to hear it here, is that that has increased the formula proportion that we use relatively dramatically to do that. We recognized that late in the year. So what the board decided to do, and you can see on the appropriation sheet, that second sheet, is that we held a line for all our communities and essentially reduced the apportionment request by forty-five percent. So that in two thousand and eighteen, we are asking the same of the town of Lee that we asked in two thousand and seventeen. asked in two thousand seventeen, uh, just because we didn't wanna hit everyone with sticker shock in the height of budget season, uh, and certainly give, uh, people time to let them know that, uh, there will be an increase, uh, in the cost of McGregor appropriation. So, uh, that's kinda the thumbnail sketch, uh, on that whole, that whole matter, and I'm very willing to answer questions.
Can you tell us what our rate would be without that reduction that you guys did over the line?
Sure, if you looked at that, on that chart that I have there...
Yep.
And looked at that subtotal of a hundred and thirty-five thousand...
Yep.
And did a rough percentage of Lee's percentage of, what, twenty-six point eight-three, it figures out around thirty-six thousand plus dollars. Now, that's at zero percent, and I can say that, uh, since I've been here for the past five years, um, we have always discounted that rate, um, and we use it with, with, looking at our finances, we see how things are flowing in, and because we are a nonprofit, we believe in keeping some of that back to the taxpayers, uh, so we have discounted twenty, twenty-five percent, uh, for the last four or five years, uh, in those appropriation requests. But straight line, Scott, it would be, I think, thirty-six and change, um, if we've got your calculator on, unless my rough math is off, I can't guarantee anything, so... And again, I just wanted the, the board and everyone aware that there'll be an increase coming regardless, uh, of what that reduction might be, what the board, uh, decides to agree upon.
Can you give us some information in terms of your finding a new home?
Yes, that was a nice question. Uh, you might have read, and I've, I've kept, trying to keep up to date in the E-CRIR and the Durham Friday updates, that, um, there has been a site carved out for the University Police Department, Durham Fire Department, and McGregor, uh, in where Waterworks Road, if you're familiar with Campus at Allstown, where the existing UNH Police Department is, which would be leveled, and they would put up, uh, quite the facility. Um, it's, it's still in the very early preliminary stages, uh, the architect really has only worked out a footprint, uh, which we, uh, was determined with, there were some wetlands issues, that's all been mapped out, it's all been done, and realizes that her initial, uh, plotting of, of the floor plan will fit on that site. So I guess the university, uh, gave the architect a nod to proceed and stop with some more preliminary drawings, so that's where we're at now. It would serve our needs tremendously. Um, as you all know, you graciously house one of our ambulances here, because we only have room for two, um, back there, we frequently run three, we ran three today, um, so it's, we're very, very busy. We're actually looking at considering a fourth ambulance, um, one that would truly be like a reserve and more teaching ambulance, that we can still use it for transport, uh, but take it to our classes where people could have a real, real-time look, uh, at what an ambulance is like, without jeopardizing the responses of the first three, uh, but that's, that's a little bit down the road.
So it's right downtown, is the spot that they're thinking?
Yeah, it's, it's on campus.
Yeah.
Yep.
As you're going around the loop, it's where the, is that where UNH Police still is, or did they move?
No, no, they moved.
Okay.
That's no longer there.
Okay, yeah, I thought that was like, hold on, I'm like, how are they gonna squeeze?
It's just a grassy knoll. No, if you went on the backside of campus and under the railroad bridge, right hall is out there, and on the way to the Waterworks plant, actually.
Ah.
That's, that's what...
Out in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Bill, this ongoing, um, for lack of a better word, testy discussion about Durham Fire running paramedics and you guys running paramedics, has that been finally resolved?
I think that's been well put to bed, uh, to do that. The, the issue of Durham Fire running paramedics will be that exact fact, that they run paramedics within their own community. We're running paramedics to all three, uh, four communities, count the university. Um, one of our paramedics is sitting right downstairs tonight, teaching CPR class, uh, with it, so we have, um, some of the most experienced paramedics in the entire state of New Hampshire, over a hundred and thirty years collectively, uh, of paramedic experience. So the communities need to be aware that they are incredibly well-served, um, by an organization that is very, very cost-effective, uh, as you go around the state and look at what other municipalities, uh, might pay.
Now, Bill, on the, on your sheet in the first, you talk about the graining of our country.
Yes.
That means we shouldn't build any more assisted living facilities?
Yes. We should be, absolutely.
We should be or not?
Well, I...
Trusting us more money?
You know, when I did this in July, John, we were considered one of the top three, we are now designated number two in the country...
Why?
As far as the most elder, uh, population per capita in the country. Um, so something's got to be done, and whether we build facilities and, and house them there, which I think from our standpoint is a better condition, uh, we're finding many responses, and Lee's also in that, uh, we have elders staying at home and hanging on by their thumbnails...
Yep.
Uh, until something catastrophic happens. And then, you know, now the families, they get together and creates quite a quandary, because in a matter of a short period of time, knowing that, that mom or dad can't go back to their home, all this starts kicking in, and it is, it is just a nightmare, so...
Yeah, I'm just curious, for my own sake, at the university, do you pick up students?
Oh, sure.
What's the distribution? I'm just curious, is it like five percent of your... Yeah, I'm sorry, about age group, students versus people that runs versus...
Yeah, uh, yeah, well, it's funny, it's not funny you said that, but it's a very good question. This summer for elderly was astronomical, was just through the roof. Uh, the student population has been relatively quiet.
Okay.
Now, that is weather and celebration dependent.
I knew you were going there.
Trying to be thoughtful, Brian, as you, as you know, to do that. To give a good example of what we bring to the table, and I think members of the Budget Committee, uh, need to know this, is we had a concert, I think last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, and we had on the road six ambulances, all our own. We, we borrowed some, we temporarily licensed them to the state, that came at no cost to anyone, uh, just run by our volunteers, and we had all six on the road at one point in time, and poor hospitals, we're in constant touch with them, and we distribute them all around, uh, the place, but, um, overall, I think the student population this year has been, uh, very well behaved, and they've had a few black marks in the past, and, uh, this year has been, I think, relatively gossled. Uh, I could be eating my words in a few weeks, nonetheless.
Bill, a couple things. Um, first of all, does it still look like Riverwood Durham's gonna get open in eighteen?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, if they build, and you may not know the answer to the ship, but when they build the new fire station, will we still get to, uh, provide home to one of your ambulances?
I don't think so. Um, we build in capacity, uh, to house everything.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's an operational disadvantage for us.
It's to our advantage.
I know it is, and I, I very much, we always have appreciated what the town has done, but it, it, to turn, to get that ambulance back into the response district, to staff it, is easily a half-hour turnaround time.
Okay.
Travel out, get the thing, open doors, close the doors, leave, um, and we've done time trials, and so a half an hour, and again, it's a reserve, so it's not like there's an active call, although sometimes that happens. Most of the time, the two are out, that triggers immediate to get someone out here to get that third one in, so it's not that it's, it's a call that's pending, typically.
Can you, and I don't know if you can divulge this, but you're retiring, so...
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. I had, I, I assume you've at some point started the process for replacing it?
Yes, yeah.
So, uh, how far are you into that? Have you picked anybody yet?
No, um, I gave the board three months' notice, and have been working with the board extensively, uh, in finding a replacement. I think they're going to do a, a significant recruitment effort, uh, to do that. Uh, there are plans underway to name temporary, uh...
Oh, okay.
People, so yes, so trust me, the place won't fall apart.
Well, it's good enough.
Oh, it won't, and, um, yeah, so thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. And thank you for all the service, you've been there for, seems like ever, but, but you've been there for a while.
Well, um, I, Brian over here will well know that we started in the very early years, uh, Brian and his, his former wife, and, and myself, and many others started that way, way back in the nineteen seventies, so it was like coming home again, it was like a homecoming for me to come and, and take this position to do it.
I found that book the other day that has everybody's picture in it.
Oh, really? That old black and white?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I could show it around the room, and I can guarantee you, you're the only one that'd pick me out.
I was a whole lot skinnier in those days. You could put me in that group too.
Yeah, well, you don't even come close to me.
I remember we used to go to Zs Hall, Joe Ford and I would go and attend a meeting, we'd get cookies, cookies and drinks, I don't remember what we got for drinks, but I remember we liked cookies. So that was one of the good reasons Joe and I went to get the presentation.
Cookies, yes.
I should've brought cookies tonight. If I would say, "I'm here next year, Scott," I would've said, "I'll bring cookies."
I'll bring cookies.
Yeah, yeah. Tell whoever takes your position that they have to bring cookies.
I will do that, so noted, so noted.
I just found it very informative, and it was good to get up to speed in terms of what you guys did, and the whole presentation and stuff, so it was nice to have, so...
Well, thank you. One of the early things that happened when I first came on, Scott reached out to myself and Chris Lemlin, and sat down and said, "Jules, I wanna understand your finances, how things work and everything else." And it prompted me, and I'll share this with you, Scott, I don't know if you know this, um, to immediately say, "From now on, we'll be sharing our full audit with everyone." Um, it just, we might as well be transparent, um, even though the towns are paying, uh, really, it runs around five, six, or seven percent of our total budget, you deserve to know, uh, what's going on. So every year, I transmit a letter to Julie, in this case, and the whole audit, uh, is attached, so anyone is welcome to see, uh, our audit, and where things go, and what we do, uh, in that, so...
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, it's my, my pleasure.
Congratulations.
We all thank you, I, everybody's giving me congratulations, and it was some trepidation that I'm, I'm doing this.
What are you gonna do?
Everybody asks me that.
What the hell are you gonna do?
I don't know.
That's what I always say.
I'll figure it out.
Find something.
I'll find something. You know, you need to find something, otherwise people will find it for you.
That's exactly.
They'll fill that void, wouldn't they?
Ralph would, Brian, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
That's true, they do fill that void, don't they? Well, it looks like we've had a short break, and we're gonna do CP, CIP when they arrive, if they arrive.
If they come back?
We should've kept them while we had them.
There was quite a group of us years ago, that Don Bliss and, uh, Bill Cody, myself, um, Billy, Billy Wood and Bob Wood, who were the fire, uh, firefighters here, and one thing I really remember one night, and we had a, was tractor trailer tanker, and a car head-on on Route Four, right by, I don't think it come and go, I did that for extra time, and I pulled up and get out my, it's smoking gasoline, and it was a tanker truck, so I jumped back in the cruiser, backed up, hit four of the machines, you know? And I get on the radio, in those days, the call sign was sixty-four, and I said, "Sixty-four to Durham," Billy Wood said, "Go ahead, six-four," I said, "Send me the world." It was a short pause, and Billy says back, "Ten-five-six-four, world, en route." It turned out the gasoline was not the tanker, it was a, the car...
It isn't.
The tank from the car.
Yep.
Actually, it was a suicide, I got to go head-on, and the truck had about a hundred miles to go.
Three hundred and thirty.
Don't worry. But boy, I thought that truck was full of gasoline.
Oh, you backed up quick, huh?
This is not gonna be good.
Geez.
He actually sent me a foam truck from Pease.
I can imagine.
He called Pease.
It's definitely a foam truck.
This is the official line.
Getting down to the bitter end here.
See, cause you're thinking, "Oh, this is less formal."
Well, you guys go on forever.
Do anybody hear from Joda, from Allison, how she's...
Yeah, right up in Allison's.
Didn't she respond to one of those?
Yes, she responded to the email.
Yeah, I thought.
That that worked so good, anyway, whatever.
Did you hear anything from Allison?
No, she responded that it was okay or something, it changed, so, no.
Guess it wasn't.
It was, it wasn't okay.
Wasn't okay.
Oh, do we have any more nominations for volunteer? Still just that three?
Three, I only know of two.
Uh, there was two people, but three nominations.
Oh, okay, I only know of two people.
Uh, two people, but there was three nominations, one for the same person.
What was this for? For the town center?
Volunteer of the Year.
Oh, Volunteer of the Year, oh.
Julie, where are we with, I thought we were writing a letter, a plaque for Bill?
I think Scott's working on it.
Scott's working on that plaque for Bill?
Bill who?
Cody.
No, not this guy, the other guy.
Oh, this, oh, this guy.
Scott Neves.
Oh, okay, sure, he walked in, huh? Usually, he's running, Scott, this guy's right atop the things, he doesn't miss a beat.
Bill's been there forever, I don't remember how long he's been there.
It's been a while.
So it's, no, it's only five years.
Well, cause he's been a firefighter so long.
As the director.
As a director, but before that, he was...
He's been there for ever, ever since I can remember, even as a kid.
Yeah, well, he was in the fire department Durham for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
So do we have any idea when they're, come upstairs?
Supposed to be seven-thirty.
Ah.
Looks like they got a corner, you know, so, yeah.
Well, there's forty, forty-three.
Dave, Wayne, and the other gentleman, the last one, I don't remember his name.
Howard, and then Lorraine, this is four.
Okay.
And then a five is here, that's five, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you have nine, right?
Maybe five for a four.
Five for a four.
But they have nine people, don't they? Yeah.
Yeah.
I was happy to see there was no complaints about chocolate this evening.
I think you got some chocolate from him.
He got chocolate at the...
You didn't bring him.
Training session on Tuesday, unanticipated, but I gave him two, and you know what his response was?
Well, that's it?
Is this it?
That's it?
It's that it?
We need more.
Oh, jeez. And sadistic.
At least five.
No, but then he'd say, you know, "Only five?" Only five.
You know, keep the standards low.
I just don't understand why there's so much growth going on in this area.
What do you...
I don't see what's opening up, I mean, you got these thirty-six houses, that was Cheney's, now it's bought out, like Chinburg, and you got this one over here, and, I don't know, I, what's in the area that's making it grow? And what's in the area that's making it grow?
Well, the other thing is in terms of.
Because people, I mean, the median price of a house in Portsmouth is six hundred thousand dollars.
That's why it's coming here, yeah.
But also in terms of building permits, how many of those are, I want to put up a shed?
Yeah.
Break down.
What's new, where are new homes?
Eight new homes, what's the rest of them? Because.
A deck, a shed, a.
The thing is, in terms of permits, different permits require different amounts of time, Bill's time in terms of checking them out. If we're putting in a new market basket, yeah, that's way big.
Yeah.
But if it's, you know, I'm putting up, you know, this, this deck or something, that's a different kind of commitment versus a house. So I want to know what this time is.
Solar panels, for example. I think he came out and inspected my solar panels before I, it was approved. So, yeah, it could be lots of.
Is any other commercial?
Different things.
No, there's really not much commercial. Except for U S Gas is in the future. It looks like they're expanding a restaurant back there and some other things.
But I mean, this, this last year, there was nothing commercial to speak of, was there?
No.
Well, U S Gas is like, gone now. I mean, it's urban.
They're still working on a form, right?
They're supposed to be increasing it, though, the big shed.
Yeah.
U S Gas is no longer U S Gas.
Yeah, it's urban.
Yeah, it's urban. I don't go there, so I don't.
Yeah, they sold it to them.
Leasing it to Urban.
So is it gonna be a real restaurant or is it gonna be?
Yeah, it's supposed to be a sit-down.
The money he's getting from the lease is going to allow him to finance the restaurant part of it, the stuff in the back.
So was this his plan, like, from the beginning?
U S, yeah, U S Gas is planned.
Well, the guy that owns, I don't remember the guy's.
To lease, to quickly switch it over to Urban?
I don't know if that was originally, I think he needed money to continue on, as Scott was saying, to plan out the rest of the property.
So that backside of the property, there's enough room, so to put a restaurant?
Medigation?
Yeah, they did mitigation to get used to the property.
He had to pay money and it went to the power major.
Yeah.
Land purchase.
See how that's done? You can buy your way through the system, you might do. What's gonna happen to the old Spencer or the new Congo or the place it's built?
Micken Herbs?
Micken Herbs, whatever.
Oh, yeah. Is there gonna be something there?
We looked into that.
Yeah, we did.
We can't condemn it, we can't, so.
Can't burn it.
That's the matter with it.
He always wanted to burn it.
Is there, like, environmental problems there or, so it's just?
I don't think so.
Oh, I have to share this. Someone that would invest in it to?
My understanding is he really doesn't want to sell. He just pays taxes out every year, lets it just sit there and fall down? The police were saying that they'd have trouble with people getting in it, right? Couple of years ago? There was, there's no enough wrong with it for us to do anything about it.
I have to share this with you, John, because in the T C B C, we have one member, I will not say who it is, but they've one-upped you.
That's hard to do.
Because we're talking about the buildings at the town center and we mentioned that, you've mentioned a couple of times that you like to have controlled burn of land.
Absolutely. They want to have some fun.
And the fire chief has said, no, we will not do that. Well, he's kind of one-upped you. What he would like to do is have an explosion, dynamite to blow it up. So he's kind of raised the bar there a little bit.
Certainly.
Well, that would fire, it would become a fire, result in a fire.
Well, the explosion, I don't, I don't know. But he's kind of like, I think we need to blow it up. So he's advocating dynamiting the thing and blowing it.
So the guy just doesn't want to sell it? And he just wants it to sit there and rot like that? Is there, there's nothing the town can do, like, say, okay, it's an eyesore and we need to level it or whatever?
It's not the only eyesore we have.
That's a pretty big one.
Then it becomes subjective.
It's a pretty big one.
Well, then the property right next to it's no winner either.
The little house?
Well, I know, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a winner.
Whose is that? Connect?
You just take them all out.
No, I mean, isn't it, isn't he interested in selling? So someone could, like, put something there that's?
Well, maybe he's waiting for a real tie-off, you'd have a good tell.
But then you can hurt the.
He's just waiting in the back.
It's wetlands in the back.
All I know is he doesn't seem to want to sell the property.
Yeah, there's wetlands in the back.
Who actually owns it?
I forget who owns it.
Spencer owned it for years. And he leased it to Micken Herbs.
It was, one of the girls was on one of my soccer teams and her parents owned it. It was, they were Indian or something or.
Yes.
Greek or something. I can't remember. Yeah. I can't remember. Oh, gosh, what was her name? They were a really nice family, actually. Very nice. And she was a sweet girl.
When, we've got a few moments. What is our thoughts about the fireworks thing? Are we interested in maybe just including it in the operating budget?
I don't, I look at it as an opportunity for town to make, so I would go for it.
I would too. I think we should have fireworks.
It was, it was great when I, I mean, I stayed the last time that they had it and it was great. It was unfortunate, it was an awesome fireworks display. It was unfortunate that not so many people were there. I mean, there were very few people there. But I think if they let people know that there's gonna be a nice fireworks show afterwards and maybe for the experience of.
The only negative I heard from people are, is scared the heck out of their animals.
Oh, that were close by?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the only real negative thing I heard.
And the people that are close by, that have animals. You mean, like, your?
Carton road is close.
You're talking about, like, your dog? Or you're talking about, like, farm animals?
There was an older lady with a dog that complained because her dog was, I guess, small and skittish and all the noise totally freaked the dog out. So that was one of them. Other ones, in terms of people who have horses and stuff, kind of freaked them out. Karen said she put her horses inside so they wouldn't be exposed to too much. But at late at night.
I mean, Raceway does it all the time and, so I guess, yeah, that's something.
If you put it in the operational budget, it means there, if somebody wants to really look for it, but it's a whole, our whole movement to try to get the townspeople together. It's just one piece of it.
More town, yeah.
Yeah, more town participation.
And I, the thing I propose in terms of, we put it in for eight and she gets donations from whomever she can spend up to that. And then if she gets enough donations, then.
She doesn't spend that.
She doesn't spend that much, so.
And it would be after the fair? It would be that night?
Did you see, Brian, we put all the police cars in the operational budget now?
I mean, that would be at least.
I know, I remember you used to get up there every single year and I'm going.
It's.
It's crazy.
It was, it was great.
So being in the operational budget, just every year, you just get the new one, the old one gets retired.
It was really, it was good.
It's a good way to get one. I never did, not.
We got eight, got one.
Yeah, I know, we always had to get up there. How they gonna refuse you, you know?
I asked Karen and she says.
They'll go to us every two years.
Because they wanted to.
It was the first, yeah.
Well, it was supposed to be ten thousand and she got them to give us a discount. I believe it was ten thousand, gave us a discount, but then they even gave us more, so.
On top of it. So it ended up that it was eight thousand dollars for that display?
As the fire chief was talking tonight, and there's probably ten thousand reasons why you can't do this anymore, but years ago, the university used to have a student call company. And the way they handled, the kids came from all over the country that had some local certification as firefighters. And they'd get free room, not board, to stay at the fire station nights. And they would handle the night calls. And there was a kitchen there and they do their own cooking and everything, but that's how they handled it. And when they got called out, I think they paid them some stipend, but only when they get called out.
They get any kind of credit for it towards the end?
I don't think so.
I mean, it'd be something you could do, I think.
I mean, I'd have to go back, this, we're talking a long time ago, because Durham.
No, no, but I think it's a good idea. I mean, McGregor uses a lot of U N H students that are kind of pre-med, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, they're training. Yeah, they do a lot of that, yeah.
It's not something to look at, I don't think, for this year, because first of all, I don't think you have the accommodations to put them up yet, yet. And the other thing is.
Bunker?
You do have a bunker?
Yep, yep, I think there's six bunks in there. Okay, six.
Well, then you might, but I don't know, but I'm sure the insurance company.
So that's the, that's the thing, the liability, the insurance and stuff.
Yeah, you have to look at all those things to see if it was cost-effective, because it might run your insurance up to such a point that it's no longer cost-effective. But it might be a way of covering nights if he's having some real difficulty.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, what we can do to help, I mean, because he even has gaps in the schedule, Thursdays.
That's how, that's how the university and Durham did it back years ago. I'm talking about seventies and early eighties.
Well, I think, I think, you're sending out one man in a truck, you got.
Yeah.
Now, was that, I still don't understand exactly his answer. Was that a fire truck or was that the rescue truck? That wasn't like a ladder truck, did it?
No, I don't know.
It was, it was a motor vehicle accident, he said. It was a rollover.
So he said it was a rescue truck.
It's a rescue truck, it's not the fire, it's not a ladder truck.
Well, either way.
But there was still only one.
He's one guy, you know, and he gets there and who knows what you got? You got gas running all over the road, you got a guy hurt inside your cab, you got, who knows, kids, you know.
I suspect it's a toss-up on what truck.
Well, we asked you when we talked with him.
Unless we don't give him his exact story.
We talked about having somebody show up at your house on fire.
Could be one.
In a truck, one guy, and he could be eighteen years old.
Hey, it's come a long way.
Absolutely.
I can remember pulling up to a house fire and Peter, Hoyey, Hoyey, the only other one there, and he stayed there with the guide and host and I came back and got the fire truck and drove it out. Came back in the police group and drove the fire truck for the call.
I'm not sure an eighteen-year-old with the fire truck has seen it fucking much of an improvement.
Well, you have to hire eighteen-year-old cops now if they qualify. It's got to say, ready? You're giving them a gun.
I know.
Yep.
Did we lose a police officer, was there something on the air?
Yeah. Left.
Officer Millar left.
Yeah, you saw the ad?
Yeah. Had he been to, was he a newbie?
Does anybody know?
You know.
He had been there.
Very important.
I don't know if it's ten years, but it's more than six.
Yep.
Does anybody know what Durham is doing down on Lantino Road where they cleared all that land off? Does anybody get out Lantino Road?
Can you say?
They've cleared off.
He had other things.
They've cleared off about two hundred, two thousand, almost a half a mile of road front. And they've cleared, and I think it's all conservation lands. But I don't know why they stumped it. They've stumped it and brushed it and the whole thing. I think we need to call the town and ask them, because there's something in the paper about it being a conservation easement, but it's enormous. And I don't know why they stumped it.
And if we can give them another one, maybe.
And for that, twenty, twenty-five minutes a little bit.
Oh, good.
So she'll be out for three months, so.
Oh, yeah.
She seems to be good. She's gonna give me the ride to the.
The county farm?
Yes.
Yeah.
Scott had to go to this county farm the other day.
Oh, get this, you know, I got a large check to give to the commissioners, so we're going over. And like last year, Millar sat in the car. So she says, she's getting out of the car and she says, I think I should accompany you. I says, oh, okay. They're kind of, the C S Os are kind of dangerous in there anyway. She says, yeah, I know them. So we go in there and they're chatting them up all over the place. So it's like, jeez. So she wasn't really protecting me, she was kind of chatting them with the C S Os.
Conversation.
Yeah.
That looks good.
But I figured if you go into a secure facility like that, if you're not safe there, what else are you gonna be safe?
It was a riot.
I'm sorry, what time did you say they were gonna be here?
Well, it's seven-thirty. Should I go down and?
It's seven forty-four.
Down, stand in the doorway and wait.
Our break is over.
Can I be excused for a few minutes?
Second.
Do it, please, you're an asshole.
Second, excuse me.
Put it down.
I'll take a little piss.
These are little boys, bro.
Julie, if the town does the fireworks, do they have to get an additional rider on the insurance?
I don't think so.
Because that's one of the things that's pulled Rotary back, this chairman's time, but Rotary and National, no longer, ensure fireworks, so we're definitely that's why.
I mean, we didn't notice anything.
You did, you said?
Yeah, I think so.
Trust me, if they, if they.
Right, I'm sure they were.
For a rider, they're, this will break out.
Give them that extra guy that he wants.
You see, does it give the position?
Karen says ten minutes.
Give position.
Ten minutes.
Well, right. He's trying to work on that too, but.
Thirty-six more houses at the end, you got about twice that number of kids. And I got to school for Hoyey. That's exactly. Well, when the superintendent was here at one of the board's select meetings, he said, for some reason, the, tends to like broke children. He claims they're moving in now, right?
A part-time position.
But they're moving in, they're not being developed, they're moving in.
Well, then they must change the percentage, because Bill's saying we're graying, but.
Yeah, we're graying, yeah.
But maybe Hoyshur is not as gray as everybody else.
Maybe not. Something's happening around this place.
I know my oldest boy just built the house up on Chestnut. Basically because he wanted his kids in Oyster River.
Yeah.
That looked in Barrington, but there was no guarantee that, that they would go to Oyster River if they were in Barrington, so that's true.
Well, they can tuition in, like. They're taking a greater number now.
With that agreement, Oyster River has with Barrington.
Right.
They might not have been able to tuition them in, because it's a.
Not necessarily.
It's some kind of lottery system.
You're right, yeah.
And if you don't win the lottery, you don't go.
They go to Co Brown or one of those others.
Dover.
Dover, yeah. Barrington had the opportunity to become part of our system way back.
Way back when.
Started, yeah. And they didn't do it.
Well, at some point in time then, Nottingham were gonna have to do something, you know?
Right.
I mean, Nottingham's still sending them all the way to Dover, that's a.
I thought they went to Northwood too.
They just had that big thing.
Did they go to Northwood too?
With Hoyshur.
Dover, Dover, also go to Dover. That's been going on for years, because I, when I was in college, I drove that bus, the high school bus. Fernal had, Dick Fernal had the contract, started on one fifty-two up to Route four and came down Route four. People had to get their kids out to that road if they were gonna get the bus in the Dover High School.
Oh, my God.
I think they run it low, I think they got a couple buses now that run Dover.
And they, they just had that big vote just last year. They were considering Newmarket, they were considering Nottingham and Barrington, and they decided to increase Barrington and I think Nottingham, didn't they?
I took some.
Yeah. To accept them to come in to Oyster River. Oh, they're down Newmarket.
Yeah, they both Newmarket. Question is, how long are we gonna continue to sustain this? I mean, as you look around the, in the college world, the number of college students are dropping. Although, look at Keene State College, they're, they're in real big trouble.
Just kind of dilated, huh?
Yeah, they really did. And so they've, basically, all the other colleges, the University of New Hampshire and other areas have to shore them up, which reduces operating expenses that the university is up. So it tried to take care of your own a little bit, although we can sustain what's been going on in some of these other areas. The culture is changing, the number of students are dropping, huh?
Yeah.
Well, let's face it...
For wedding, we're like, this is part of it.
They're just not being made, they're not being made, the kids have a problem.
They're not going to college.
I mean, I read a study, and it was kind of interesting, it said, you know, this big crisis in social security will come to an end when the baby boomers die off.
That's correct.
There will be no more crisis.
There won't be any crisis.
Because it will, it will support itself. Problem is, the baby boomers are causing the crisis.
Like, right now, right?
Right now.
Yeah.
She's back.
Hello.
She's back.
Her maid's behind me.
You're the leader?
I am.
Wait for me, I'm the leader.
I don't, I don't... I mean, maybe, maybe you have to change the curriculum a little bit, but certainly the demand on the technology side.
Yes, that's true.
Bomb has a power.
Absolutely booming. Same thing, same thing on the aerospace side. Well, the area that's taking beating is liberalized. Students are dropping off like crazy.
They get high jobs.
But the students don't wanna go into STEM because they don't wanna do math. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So they run for the mathematics.
Oh, thank you.
I'm back.
You're back? I wonder what happened to you, okay, it's got a bullet wound to your lip. The fire chief was getting worried that he was picking up, you know. It smelled too much like smoke or something.
Oh, you just turned it on.
Oh, you did?
You just turned it on.
I just turned it off.
I think you just turned it on.
No, it's on screen.
There we go.
There you go. Ooh, we're moving.
Do we get popcorn?
Yeah, we need some popcorn.
He's got, we're supposed to bring food.
Yeah.
Why is it, the folks to me bringing food?
Well, a lot of our boys got popcorn, didn't they?
I said I only supply you with food, not everybody. Well, we all like chocolate.
Wine.
It's a great wine.
I can't buy your wine.
You get some cheese with that wine?
Oh, really? All right. I won't be welcomed back.
Thanks, it's been...
No, you're turned in.
Oh, okay, thanks.
She's ready for your flash drive. I mean, it's right in front, right?
No, I meant that's why I...
Oh, well. At least the mouse is charged. Hopefully it updated so it doesn't keep going out like it did the other day, remember that?
We'll see. Oh, what are you, an update? Hello, it's probably updated. Doesn't anybody have turned on lockdown?
Well, had I known, two hours ago.
I was gonna say, this could be significant.
Sometimes a twenty minute update, you know.
They have to do one last lead, I think, didn't they?
Yeah, they do.
Getting windows ready. The window updates.
Uh, well, while we're waiting.
It's a hundred percent complete. We're moving forward.
Do not turn off your computer.
Do not touch it.
Do not.
That means it's a hundred percent down.
A hundred percent complete, right.
Working on updates, yeah.
So it's one of eighteen that you worked on.
Oh, that happened to be the other day.
One of nineteen.
I was like, oh my God.
Takes forever.
I like went to sleep and locked it open.
I know.
It was a nice, maybe when I wanted to get on there quick, this was like...
Of course.
When I started...
While, while we're waiting, what do you have in your package? Is, you should have, the first, I think it's twelve pages, are the individual department, okay? For the fifteen years. Bear in mind, the only real accurate one is the current, the one that we're talking about this year. That should be followed by a summary chart, which again is kind of by department, but it doesn't, it just breaks it down a little bit different so you can kind of see some of the added things that go into the CFE. And then, and then there's a fifteen year bar chart. That's not one that I typically show anyplace I go. I usually only use a five bar because way out there, if we're at all good, is only about fifty percent accurate. It's just planners, group planners in there. And then the last chart is the, is the one that you guys have asked for over the past couple of years, and that is the expenditures and deposits and the trust funds compared to last year, okay? So, without having that up yet. Again, I just remind you that the definition of capital that we're using is an expenditure of five K or more with useful life of five years or more. And resort, resort in a new, in a new, a replacement item for the time. I have gone back to our original statement and added in there what has always been there, but we just never showed it. And that was that increases to the present use for extended, extents, the extending life of an existing item. And the reason why that's important now is that the recycle center is starting...
You don't want to share out a few extra? This is, is PowerPoint printed, if you want to share, I have a few extra.
We're not filming.
We're not filming.
We are filming.
And I'm ready to say what I wanted to say.
You're great.
The recycle center is kind of going under some different thought processes these days. If I can make a very vague reference, and that is a change of personnel. And, and so, so Toby came on a little late for the CIP and had never done a CIP before. And so, we asked Howie to go down there and spend some time with him, and Howie went out of town. And, 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 well, we all have real jobs, right? You know, and fortunately, that's what happened. And I did not realize that at the time. And so, he's been doing about five days, and I sent Ed down, who he used to do the recycle center. And Ed called me up that afternoon, he says, "What am I down here for?" He's got that thing all done. And he has done a good job. So the problem is, is that he can't look out yet. He hasn't got that, familiar with the center. But he's done a very good job of what he's done, and he was had the answers, so I was pleasantly surprised.
They all have paper copies of the PowerPoint.
Okay, all right. Stapled correctly?
No, look over.
No, backwards.
Oh.
It's backwards.
It's just backwards.
Trying to look it up.
I got it.
It's very good for your brain.
Oh, yeah.
Halfway through. Look and write, get brain right.
Halfway through with the planning board earlier this evening, and somebody said, "Oh, you're starting in the other direction." Okay, I hope you're here. And of course, all, continuing on anyway, all values are in today's dollars. And as you folks requested a couple of years ago, we're doing all new equipment. With the exception of two places. One is where we transfer equipment from one department to another, as we still have a few of those. Namely, a police guard to Karen's office, and there's a front-end loader that moves from the highway department to the recycle center. But the rest of that, we're working towards Randy, as long as he said two hundred and eighty-five days. He wants to keep a used truck in there, so you're gonna find that there's a used truck in there. It's way out. So, all right, so let's start in. We're in the highway department. Just to refresh your memory, the plow trucks are now being planned for new. And that each truck would be there for twenty years and then replaced. He uses three on the road, but he wants a backup. And the reason for that is, he gets hit with a big snowstorm and one of them is dead, he's got a, he's got a backup. Now, the way that works is, first three are being, or the newest three are being used very early, and then that oldest one will be the backup. And that's the one that we would get rid of at the twenty-year period. And then they'll shift down each time he gets a new one, so that's the plan. Now, he and I had a long discussion because they've now got their hands on the first new one and starting to get educated on it. And I didn't want to put it on the document, but he believes that we might be able to push him more than twenty years. So we'll see what happens. We certainly aren't gonna know that for the next five years, maybe even for ten years. But that's there, we're talking about it and kind of working at it. The next item is the replacement of the small trucks. That's the two trucks that he puts a plow on and does the parking lots. He does the recycle center road and recycle center building. He does the parking lot down at the park and, you know, that kind of thing. Those, he also uses those for cleanup at intersections where the big plow, it's too difficult to move stuff in the middle of the road, so he just leaves a pile there and then the little trucks clean it up. They're being replaced every ten years. They're a much lighter weight truck, not as beefy as the big ones. And they're on a, on a five-year rotation, so every five years, we get a new one in there. And that's been going on, by the way, for several years. And then, as we mentioned already, the front-end loader is every ten years. And when that one is, instead of trading it in, as we did last time anyway, when Roger Rice was there, we traded it for the cost of the trade-in to the recycle center. So someplace, there was some magic numbers, I think down in the accounting officers or something, that just moved it from one area to the other. That's kind of the story there. And then, which is what Scott asked for, is to see the spreadsheets. I've included those in here, so they're a little harder to read because I have to squash them to get them on eight and a half by eleven. And they're kind of truncated. But you can see that the one right at the top is the one that's being delivered now. And, and then the, the next one that gets replaced is, is the nineteen ninety-six, the T-three truck. And that again is, is a replacement of a new truck and so on down there. So it's essentially every five years, he does have that used one that he keeps wanting to hang on to. And so I figured, well, he's got two hundred and some days left, so I'll let it go for this year.
Exactly. I might find the issue.
Can I ask you a question, Bob?
Yeah.
You just mentioned the T-three, right? Should be replaced in two thousand twenty-two. I don't see any dollars in two thousand twenty-two. Am I missing something?
Probably a problem when I copy that over.
New equipment trust fund deposits.
T-three, no, you're absolutely right. Didn't come across. It's two hundred and eighty-seven dollars in two thousand twenty-two. I, I did a copy of it to this thing, just... There's probably some formula or something that got dropped in there.
Excuse me.
The tool of the call for two thousand and nineteen, Bob is the deposits for this department for the year, right? The thirty-one...
Thirty-one.
One seventy?
Oh, that one too, yeah.
Is that the...
No, I'm sorry, I was taking care of that one.
Okay.
Which one?
That'd be two thousand twenty-one.
Yep.
What is the total of deposits that you're looking for into the trust funds for the coming budget year?
On the last page of this.
Yeah, it's, it should be in hand, but it's fifty-five.
Fifty-five, okay.
The only thing that...
There.
Oh.
So that kind of solves my other question I was gonna have, because that particular highway trust fund is running a very high balance, but after you take those two expenses out, that J bring it down.
Yeah, but, you know, you gotta be kind of careful. Every once in a while, I run a thirty-year, because remember, you don't get out of here fifteen years and it ends. No, it just keeps right on going. So after a while, you start to get a feel for, it should be running somewhere around thirty, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, something like that, year to year on average. Now, I, I can't say that's right or wrong, but, you know, you just kind of get a feel for it.
Did you just add?
But I don't do that every year, I just do it on my own.
So where does the fifty-five come from in two thousand and nineteen? It's not the total of anything.
Separate expenditures from deposits.
Right.
We are trying to get the deposits to be flat.
So you're backing into the deposit base.
So we go out, all the way out, and divide back by twelve, if you will, right?
I see.
I mean, it isn't really that easy. What we do is, we watch it as, if we start going in the hole out there, we start making adjustments. But, and then when we're all finished with each department, then we go back in there and look at the whole plan, because it's really the whole plan that we want to be level. Right? I mean, some department could be up and another department down, and that's okay if the total thing is flat.
Okay.
Now, what I told you at the beginning, you obviously can't do. You can't not look at expenditures and deposits for thinking. Okay. So I think, I think all that, the problem there, Scott, by the way, is I think the formula's been dropped out of there. That happens every once in a while because of my shaking hands.
Well, Mary, can, after you tweak it, can Karen or you send us a...
I would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, so roads and bridges, this is basically the same plan as last year, just carried on. It's seven bridges and culverts over sixteen years. It used to be ten. We spread those out for a couple of reasons, in case you're interested, is, one is the state funding. And that's kind of been shifting a little bit. Although now that they're gonna raise the tolls, maybe we can get some more money.
Maybe. Maybe.
Yeah, now, now, this is one of those that, that does not, this one in Sisterns, does not repeat. And why I say that is because, like Randy says, once we get these bridges in shape, it'll be another fifty years before we'll have to look at them again.
So it repeats, but not within this timeframe?
Nor, nor in my lifetime either, at least. I don't think so. If I do, boy, I gotta have that place in Rome, I tell you. Anyway, so, so, you know, this one in the Sisterns, once we get all Sisterns in and meet the water distribution plan, then some of this will reduce and have, have good help to the total plan. And then, of course, the roads and bridges next page. Quickly, I don't see it. One that was on that one. Code enforcement office, this is...
Can I ask you a question?
Yep, yeah, oh, yeah.
What are your assumptions in terms of state funding for the bridge replacements? What are you assuming? Because that's not the total price for replacing the bridge. It's like twenty-five percent, right? Is that what you're assuming?
Eighty, twenty, is that?
Eighty, twenty, I believe.
No, okay, so you're assuming that we're gonna pick out twenty percent of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and of course, the other thing too that's bad is, we don't really know what the cost of the bridge is gonna be at this point. So we're, it's like, kind of...
It's your best guess at this particular...
Well, Randy's best guess. I don't want to claim.
Fair enough.
I mean, in all fairness to Randy, he, he talks to DOT all the time. And, you know, they know pretty much what he wants, and they have fairly good, what I wanna say, resource of what they've done and what it would probably cost. And so I, I think they're probably fairly close, but, you know, I just can't tell you them right on.
Thank you.
Code enforcement, this is one of those placeholders. I, I say that real loud for Karen's benefit, but this is one of those that we're keeping the plan in place for a couple of reasons. One, it's out there, it's not affecting anything, there's no trust fund associated to it. It's a, it's a reminder to us to, you know, keep, keep an eye on it, for one thing. Number, number two is that it's there if something happens that we can't move a police vehicle over or whatever. And so, you know, it just keeps us eyes wide open. Fire equipment. Probably you guys know as much as I do about this, but it's, basically, it's, the plan is unchanged with one exception, and that's the, the command vehicle moving in to, to this next year. In addition to that... In addition to that, because of the timing and also because there's an engine replacement coming right behind it, we have raised the deposits of $5,000 in that trust fund for seven years to kind of be ready for engine one replacement. And you can see it better on the next page. So basically what happened was the command vehicle moved, it was 2023, I believe. Remember, I think it was 2023. And it, best planning is at best 50% after, right? We had a command, replacement command vehicle in 2023, I think it was, and it was in there for $30,000. So when he came to me and asked to move it forward, you know, I told him, we don't have the money. Just so happens that we had put in the wrong dollars last year for the three thermal imaging cameras and also they were spread out, one a year for like three years in a row. He had told me that they were $40,000, so I put in three times $40,000. Turns out it was $40,000 for all three. And so by taking that out and a couple of other little things like that, we were able to cover it. But moving it forward, we didn't have the buildup occurring fast enough, and that's the difference there.
So does that mean the three thermal imaging cameras should be 40,000, not 120,000?
Yes, and he corrected me on that today. Just, I mean, like when I was coming in here, I apologize, I meant to say that.
So can you tell us? I want a technical description here, Bob. What is a gear extractor? I want a technical description.
Now...
Don't tell me extract gears.
Gear, you know what a gear is, right?
Well, there's different kinds of gear.
Well, but you know, basically the purpose of the gear, right?
Yeah. So it's a protective gear, okay.
I was trying to set you up there. It's a, what that is, is that's for removing their contaminants on, and it's apparently an ocean aquarium. I guess I'd have to turn to Scott a little bit more to, to give you a lot more definition, but...
So we have one, but then it needs to be replaced in 2032?
Yeah, we have one and it's not really doing the job that it should be doing, but he said they can work with it. And, and if you ask me anymore, I don't know. I mean, I, I, as far as I know, it might be the size of this room. I mean, I, I really have no idea. I don't know if it needs steam or hot water.
It's a wash machine.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's using chemicals though.
Yeah, it's a chemical washer.
Again, cisterns and fire ponds, this is, this is a plan, for those of you who aren't aware of it, are to, to bring the water distribution for the fire department around town up to a couple of things. Number one is that a, a constant supply first. Second of all, that it is distributed where they have the shortest runs to pick it up because as you, I'm sure you're aware of that, everything is tankered. You have to bring in all water to a scene. So they did a study about five years ago, I think it was, and, and they had kind of outlined around the, the town where these cisterns should go for the best distribution. And bit by bit, we're working our way through that. The most recent one was not a cistern, that was the current one, and that is the refurbishment of the fire pond. Although they're trying to get away from fire ponds because of the silt and, and the potential damage that you can do to the pumps and the engines. The particular one, which is the one at...
James Farm?
James Farm, apparently is, is pretty good. And what this really was doing was just cleaning out the trees around it and getting access to it a little bit better. But the pond itself was in pretty good shape, so that they're still using it or planning on using it. But most of the rest of these, the 103, those are, those are actual cisterns going in.
So there's one, there's one pond at James Farm and there's one on my Riverside Farm, correct? So there's two of the ponds.
Well, there's several left.
There's more than there.
There's some ponds.
Yours was dredged in 2010.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can I ask another question? One of the things, you're having that off, Pink, we asked the chief about it. So there's gonna be some cement cisterns, which I guess they last longer.
Correct.
Are you guys capturing those? Because at some point, they're gonna need some of those.
Yeah, they're 30-plus years old, yes.
Yeah, so just you're, as those particular things come online, you're capturing that information? So at least when we get 50 years after we're all gone, the next group of them goes on to us, so...
Correct.
Some of us will be gone. Some of us might be here.
But this is one cistern, there's five years?
How many, how many do you have?
Of the 80-something. Like in the plan or totally in town? In the town, I can't tell you. But you know, it's heavy in the, it's heavy in the commercial area, but that's because every time commercial piece of equipment was built, we may have put it in. And some of them, like some of the subdivisions, there are two. So, you know, I mean...
Well, just, my concern was that we just have them not necessarily here, but others that you guys have so that you'll know when they start coming up for maintenance.
Well...
Because some of them are fiberglass and some of them are cement. Cement lasts, he said longer, but fiberglass only lasts like 30 years, so...
Fire department has a pretty good record of when, when they, because they have the pressure test and everything, you know, so...
But we do have them, they do have them in a list, they're just out off this plan.
So you'll just have to remember every year to see if it was coming up?
They have a master plan.
They input to this, so they better be doing it. All right, transfer station. Again, as I said earlier, this plan has been modified, and by the way, I expect it to be modified next year, some two, and maybe even the following year, because as Toby is getting more experience there, he's finding things out that, that he wasn't aware, let me just leave it that way. Very first thing is that he is standardizing on, on the cans. The cans are the, what I call a roll-off. Before, they had roll-offs that were as high as 65 yard and down to, I think, 30 yard or something like that. And the, the problem is twofold. One is you can't have certain ones going on the road and other ones, and yet they need to go on the road. And the, the next thing is, is that the equipment to handle them are different, depending on the size and that type of thing. So it just really became a kind of a problem. So he is standardizing on 45-yard cans, and that's both open top and closed top. There'll be a 50-50 split, I believe. So, so the intent here is to get them standardized, that's the first thing. Second of all, I talked to him about, they aren't an expensive item necessarily, but, but again, trying to flatten these plans out is the best thing that we can do for the taxpayer. So, so what I've asked him to do, even though he's, he's putting all of them up front, we gotta, we gotta work towards replacing one every so many years that he had put on a rotation. And he's well aware of that, so if you ask him, he should be able to say, yeah, we're working towards that. We're not there yet. I expect this to be a, a couple of year plan adjustment, but, but he's, he's coming on, I'll tell you. He really is. But I do expect more things next year to, to change. We were able to keep the, the deposits of the trust fund the same for that one, although just a little whisper, we may have to do something next year. And I, and I, all depends on what he decides he, he needs and what he's doing. He doesn't know, to be honest with you, he doesn't know how many things he, it pays to rebuild and how many things it pays to replace. And so he's trying, he's gonna take this next year and try to get through that. And, and hopefully we'll be up to speed next year. One other thing is that, that front-end loader down in 2024, that's the, the one that will be replaced with Randy's current front-end loader. And we kind of coordinate that between those two departments and make sure they're always in the same year so that we're not, you know, just year-wringing.
So that 50 on 950 is kind of like a place holder, because there shouldn't be the cost to it, though?
We have to, when you're planning, you gotta put in for the, for the full amount unless you got a commitment. And, you know...
Well, when you look at this, if that, just for the sake of discussion, that loader that's in the transfer station now is worth some money, say a couple thousand bucks. Do they use that as a trade-in towards a new loader and, and does that reduce the cost of the new loader? And also, does the money in your chat here, does the money that's transferred from the transfer station to the old loader reduce the price of the new loader in this chat? Or does this chat just show the price of the piece of equipment?
Brian, the only way I can explain it is, explain to you the way it last happened. And the only reason why that is, because there's only been one. When, when the one that's there now was over at Randy's, he got a quote for a trade-in, I think it was. A trade-in, it wasn't elsewhere, it's a trade-in. And I think it's funny money, but they, they said, okay, take that money from the transfer station and apply it towards the new truck, or the new loader, sorry. And so they didn't get that trade-in, but Randy did, essentially, right? So I mean, I don't think it really went from one place to another, but they had covered costs.
When you say, when you estimate the cost in today's dollars, is it reduced by that amount? Or is that the total cost of the new piece of equipment?
That's the total, if you were to buy it right now, that's the total cost this year.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay. Library. Question?
No, I'm lost.
This plan has not changed, and I, and I just wanna share with you one story. When Ruth came to us this year, she had more in her plan for renovating. She is going to need more furniture dependent on renovation. And we stopped her from putting it in the plan because that should be the total cost as part of a renovation or new building or extension or whatever. When, when you go to an architect and you ask for an estimate, you will look down through there and you'll see that there's a line item that they always put in there that's furniture and fixtures. So, so we told her to take it out. Now, if, if for some reason, that's not what message that you guys are handing out, we need to know that. But that is kind of standard practice in capital planning. So I just jumped at the opportunity to tell her no.
So that would mean that the children's shelving replacement and the carpeting replacement reset and be pushed out way further?
No, those are replacing existing equipment, existing shelving.
Okay. Well, how about the carpeting?
It's replacing existing carpeting.
Because we're supposed to renovate the old space as well, so...
And it would, if, if you don't spend it, it will, right? But again, I'm, I'm talking about a, more of a philosophy here, right? That I'm trying to get across. You know, we are, we've gone on a record to tell them that it can, it doesn't go in here if it's going with a new building or a new addition or, right? That that's part of the cost of the building. Because that's what's driving the need for that, more furniture or whatever. Which, by the way, let me stop for a second if you give me a break. This plan does not include anything that you guys are ginning up on a new building or renovations or anything, right? Not like we did when we had the library going forward. If you recall, we were putting $100,000 every year in and, and building that up. There is no such thing going on. We are not accounting for any dollars here. And I was telling you to be sure that we're all on the same wavelength. I have a personal feeling that that's wrong, we ought to be, but that's just me. And, and what I'm afraid of is standing up at a town meeting and saying, you know, here's what we got. And I say, well, how does it fit in the CIP? And you didn't.
By the time you get done, Bob, it might be okay.
I'm, I'm watching.
Hey, it's going now.
All of a sudden, it's really...
That's because it's down in the teens. Conservation Commission, you know, that's the same thing as we've been doing every year. We've got a placeholder out there of $200,000 for buying property, you know, buying, you know, conservation land, accisements. Generally speaking, if you ask Bill Hume, they don't use that. They always try for grants and for, you know, those kinds of things, which is, is great for the town. But in case a place comes along that they can't fund it that way, then this money would be available. We don't, we have not for several years now deposited anything into that. We just keep moving it out a year. And likewise, we, when we do that, we move that $200,000 out a year. So it's there more as a placeholder, but the money is real, it's there. Police. Last year, we suggested you might want to look at doing an equipment trust fund for them. And now I'm saying, you know, because it's not going away. We're averaging about $11,000 a year over a cruiser. And I know right now that cruiser is a sensitive issue, but if you look at the total cost, although it bounces year to year, kind of goes back to what you were asking earlier on, the fact of the matter is, we could, we could really help that, flatten it out by, by doing a fixed deposits in there. And all of these things that are above the cruiser cost, the radios, fingerprinters, body cameras, all those kinds of things are gonna be replaced every so many years. So they're not going away. And so, you know, whether you are, you know, whether the cost of the radios year to year or, or unit to unit is gonna be the same, I can't tell you that. But, but you're gonna have that cost. And it's that concept that says, you know, really, we'd be doing the pound a lot better if we could set up a small trust fund, start depositing in there. You know, at this point, I can't tell you, but I would say probably 15,000 plus the cruiser cost that we need to get started. And, and then at the end, you would always have the money for the cruiser as well as the equipment. Not having to go for a warrant article. Well, I mean, you gotta go for a warrant article to get it, to spend it, but. And so the next page is a plan, and I don't, I, the only thing that changed in there is he moved the tasers out one year from last year. Recreation, this, as far as I know, no change. We didn't get any inputs on this, but from what I've been seeing, it looks like they're getting all this done. And the only thing I would point out is that we're depositing or recommending deposits of 6,000 dollars a year. The last year, even though we held it at 6,000 dollars, will probably have to be something a little more. But by that time, we'll know what they have spent and what they've got left and what the ballpark is for that last final expenditure. And we just say, let's, you know, pay for that amount. And because after that, it should go to zero. I know of no plan beyond what's there, expenditures for rec. There are three different fields that are included in that.
So it's the tennis court?
Yeah, that's Memorial Field.
Don't look at that. Don't look at that.
I hope it didn't blow up the thumb drive.
Try to boot from the thumb drive, pull the thumb drive out. So many bucks, you get your last slide.
Did the selectmen decide about the tennis court?
That's where I was, I thought maybe that's what it was.
The tennis court.
31. 31, I didn't know, I thought that was still an open item.
Actually, I thought he quoted more than that when we talked.
Well, this is the plan that we have.
I was just curious where they stood with that.
I have no visibility of what the quotes are.
Yep.
Maybe I should, or we should, but we don't.
Did you have a conversation with them, though?
I had a conversation with one individual, and I got the same story that I usually do. Oh, that's up to selectmen. And I don't want to get into that, I didn't want to get into it, that's why I didn't bring it up, but, you know.
So I thought the conversation we had with them was they were gonna rip up, I mean, the plan was to rip up the entire tennis court and put a new one down.
Yeah.
I don't think that's in that number.
I don't think it is either.
He gave a, he said either that or refurbish it.
Gonna reboot it, so.
He gave a couple different options, but, yeah.
It's not a full-size court redoing it, first off.
It's true.
And so in order to do that on town property, because you know that the lot line goes diagonally through that field. So in order to put that on town property at the size it needs to be, you gotta turn it 90 degrees.
That's why it's the size.
Just gotta paint the lines.
So who's?
It's my idea, but it won't work.
The school.
Oh, the school.
Okay.
My only point was if, the numbers, if the numbers that we heard earlier are over 40, you're gonna run out of money soon.
Guess they won't cut it then.
They'll have to refurbish instead of replace.
The next two charts are just in there to remind me to tell you that we're not finished with the front end. It's a slow process. I mean, we're making progress, but it's, you know, being volunteers, it's just not getting done as fast as I hoped it would. The other thing is, is that we think, you know, if there's gonna be, let me use an example, because she's in here. If we're gonna bulldoze the annex.
We have a new plan. John keeps wanting to do a control arm. We have another person, we want to explode it, so put dynamite in, explode it.
All right. Either way, it's the same story. I don't want to put a new furnace in there and find out five days later that I'm gonna bulldoze it.
Same with the roof, right?
Yeah, you know, and so, so we're kinda sitting there like a cat on a hot tin roof, knowing what to do. We don't, you know, until that's resolved.
That roof's not hot and tense.
Welcome to the club.
Well, I'm, don't take that as I'm trying to kick you. I mean, that's not, I feel your point.
I understand.
Several buildings in Lee, I'd like to torch, but I'm also that publicly, you know.
Now, I will, I will tell you, the one thing, the one thing that we did do is that we raised the deposits in the trust fund to 100,000 dollars. And we had reason for that. Well, Julie suggested it, but we actually got, she only wanted to raise it to, I don't know, 80 or something. And we got tired about it, we said, you know, wait a minute, if we do this, we've got, there's 47 buildings that we have in town by definition of a roof, four walls. And so, you know, there's money that is going to be called on from time to time. So we need to have that prepared. The problem is, we don't have information to support that. So we're trying to get there, that's all I can say.
So what is the total of this year's deposits, Rob?
Why isn't the library in the library capital?
Repainting the library?
It's under the town buildings. The first item is libraries painted inside. The question is, why isn't that item in the library capital building?
My understanding is the town pays for it, not that they're.
Well, the town pays for everything, so. I'm just, so there's no reason.
As long as it's in one place or the other, I don't. Don't tell me you don't want it, there will be.
So, well, where is the, now that you bring up that, the second item is a furnace for the town, where's the furnace for the library?
That was put in last year, right?
I know, but it should be on the, it's gonna have to be replaced at some point.
What font page?
Not in 15 years.
Okay.
Building, probably town buildings.
Can I ask a question, Bob, in terms of page number 12? The bond, those two bonds, it's my understanding that they should be paid off in 2023 and 2024, but you've got them going out an extra year. And it's something.
I only go by the, by the payment schedule I give them.
So do we have a payment for the safety complex?
One ends in 2023 and one ends in 2024.
So there should be now 61,320 in 2024 for the complex. So I think you've got them out an extra year.
Didn't you just say the last one's 24?
I thought, I thought the last one was 24.
The transfer station is 2024, but the safety complex is 2023.
Correct.
And you've got it down here, the last one, the safety complex is 2024, and the last room for the transfer station is 2025. So I think you're a year.
I have to look at it, Scott. I just take the bond schedule.
Okay.
And I just plug it in and I don't, I probably did it wrong, I don't.
Isn't it got to do with the way the years are accounted for in the whole thing?
The fiscal year number?
Yeah, that could be, that could be. We made that change last year, and that's, the year 18 is 1718.
Right, okay.
So if it's 24, it would be 2324?
But those bonds are 20 years, so 2023 should be the last payment that we make, so.
Is the year 2223?
Yeah, so that should be the last payment. So maybe that's something you guys can, and you might have it in there right, I don't know, just that 20 years onto 2023, 2003 is 2023, and you've got it out to 2024, so.
Did you make us a payment in 2003? Or did you make it the next year?
The first, the first payment we ever made is only an interest payment, and then the principal kicks in. So I'm not sure in terms of the schedule, I don't have the schedule in front of me.
I do. I just remembered.
Well, Bob, you're looking for 421,000 dollars, right?
I, you know, to be honest with you, I don't have that sheet, John.
No, this one here, the big one.
Yeah, I.
Yes, last page, you're looking at.
So we're just looking at that. This one.
Last page, summary sheet.
So you're looking at 2019, as you were talking about. And then of course, you got the bond payment, which brings up the 532.
Carry in the operating.
Yeah, we carry that in the operating budget. So Julie, for the CIP is 421. So last year, we looked at 395, so it's a little bit.
You are correct, yep. And then the expenditures proved above.
Yes.
That's correct. Have to be kind of careful, because if there's something that comes up in conservation, code enforcement, or police department, that can affect that bottom line, so it has to be added in, but, yep, you're all right.
Getting back to the bond payments, yeah, you're out one more year than you need to be. So you need to maybe take a quick look at that sometime.
I will do that.
And cut it back, because here in fiscal 2023, that's the last year we make the safety complex bond payment. 2024 is the last year we make a transfer station bond.
Scott, are those counted as fiscal years?
Those are fiscal years. Fiscal years. So we just saved 90,000 dollars in our budget plan.
Oh, right.
Go home now.
Do we get it?
That's our tip.
That's our tip, yeah. Scott, we get that.
Bob, would you, in terms of the police department, could you give us, you know, I haven't to do it tonight, but could you give us an idea if we were to set up a trust fund for that? How much would you propose in terms of one funding in the first year and then subsequent year after that?
Yeah, easy, but what I would tell you, right here, there's a probably a bit of spike in the beginning and then come down, you know, like in the first three years, because you're trying to build up for some other things, but it really would probably come down to about, I think the cruisers are 37 or 38. And so what you would need to have is about another 15 on top of that percussion each year.
So if maybe the first year was 53,000 and.
Yeah, probably something like that. So you'd have a first couple of years kind of pushing.
I have a question. And the question, it's just, it's just to get a feel for how the master plan, how the master plan is reflected in the CIP for certain things. Or, you know, for instance, it says work with other town, this is one of the action items under transportation. Work with other town departments to consider needed safety improvements for town roads, possible sidewalks and/or bike paths. That's, that's one of the actions.
On the recycle center?
No, this is, this is, this is action items under transportation. Okay, and I think that's, don't get me wrong, it's not a criticism, I'm just saying, it's in, it's in the master plan. Should, or at what point would, would the CIP reflect funding, if you would, to do some of the things that are in the master plan that require money, even just to do a study or a plan or whatever? Or doesn't? I mean, I'm just asking, I just want to know the process.
The answer is, I don't know. Okay. What I would tell you is, probably what happened is whoever has that action item goes and meets with 10 towns, okay, whatever, I don't know. And they come back with some, some plans. They probably would run them by you guys first.
I agree with you, it's just, I think that's one of the problems we have with the master plan is, there's no names attached to the action items, or, you know, there's no responsibility within the action items that says, I'm gonna take this action item and I'm gonna see what's it gonna take to make it happen.
Well, let me, let me just stop you there. Because there seems to be a lot of glamorizing the master plan.
Yes, the master plan, I agree. It is, I think it is glamorous.
Well, that may be, but, but there's only one function for the master plan. And that's for the planning board to be able to plan.
Say that again?
It's for the planning board to be able to plan. It is a tool for the planning board. That's why the planning board owns it, that's why they write it or get it written.
So even when there's something here that's for the ag commission, and here's our master plan, and here's the rec commission, and here's our master plan, once they turn it in, they're done with it?
It's up to them.
No, they're the ones that manage their portion.
And it's up to them.
Which is why I said in the beginning, and the answer to your question is, whoever has that section that you've mentioned
Okay.
meets with whoever and gathers a plan, they would probably come to you guys first. That's what I said. We don't manage it. What we do is work the plans that we are faced with, with those things in mind. For an example, if, this is probably a poor example, but.
No, I understand.
If the town sold Memorial Field, and there were gonna be three house lots built there, and they came forward to the planning board, we probably would start asking them about sidewalks.
Okay, so, but, no, you answered my question. The planning board doesn't make, doesn't drive the master plan.
Yeah, well, we do in the creation of it.
Right, that I understand.
But, but as the 10 years go by, that it's written for, we don't, we don't call everybody together in a room and say, okay, how you doing? Which I think is what you're looking for. You're, you're looking for.
You're right, I am.
You're looking for a check sheet that says, you've done it or you haven't done it, or you're 50% done, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm looking for, for a way to status the master plan across the 10 years to see if we're accomplishing anything until we get to the 2026 version or the 2027 version. And we don't look back to see, did we get anything done? You know, we don't measure ourselves, if you would, against our progress in the, in the master plan. And the money it requires to accomplish it, so.
Okay, you are absolutely right, we do not.
Okay.
Okay, now, I'm not sure that it's necessary, because, again, its primary purpose, I mean, we can use it for all kinds of things, but the primary purpose, the RSA say, it is for the planning board. It's a planning board tool for us to help, it's to help us write regs, it's to help us look at, you know, future plans from a developer or whatever and say, okay, look, you know, like, a good example is, that's how cisterns came about, right? I mean, the fire department said, we need cisterns. How are we gonna get cisterns done? Well, I mean, the bottom line is, every time a subdivision comes before us. Well, I mean, the bottom line is, every time a subdivision comes before us, we look for, for cisterns. Of course, they're now written in the regs, which they weren't initially. And so, so, you know, I can tell you that we are following that. We have written regs that support it, so I guess I could check that off, you know, but we don't. But that's really what it's there for, in all honesty. Okay. Now, I'm going to take this discussion one bit farther. We're in a process of putting together a presentation at the back to you guys after all this stuff is done. Where we stand relative to the two thousand and six plan.
I have a copy of that.
And, and.
I'm not trying to criticize anybody. I'm just, I like the master plan. I think the master plan is a great tool. We just, I just think we need to use it more in our thinking, that's it.
Well, we use it, I mean, ask John. I mean, we use it a lot.
But there's a lot of people involved in the master plan, or should be. It's all the committee, it's all the commissions, et cetera, et cetera.
In order to be real.
They all have action plans that went into it. They all have things that they say they want to do or get done. And all I'm looking for is a way to put that together periodically, so we can see how we're doing. That's, that's, that's my, that's my interesting.
And I understand that. And I'm coming forward to you at some later date with a presentation to tell you where we stood relative to that at the end of the.
And I appreciate that.
And I'm going to tell you, some things are a hundred percent complete, and some things never got touched. I can tell you that right now without even looking at it.
I fully expect that.
And the definition of a master plan is comprehensive plan which guides a long-term physical development for a community.
Right, a community.
But I, but I would caution you, one final word, which I was going to tell you anyway when I got here. That's one caution word, and that is that you can never expect it to be a hundred percent complete for a couple of reasons. Number one is, some people, when they put their thoughts down, are very ambitious, and it can't be done. Okay? Second of all is, things change. Ten years is a long time. Thirdly, if, if, if you think of some of those things, it's like Randy. He's dependent on DOT. And they run the show. So to say to Randy, geez, you didn't make your plan, is kind of unfair.
That's exactly why I think we need to pay attention to the master plan. Because you can't carry it forward for ten years, because things change that make you change the plan. And we should update the plan as those things happen. If somebody comes forward and says, gee, this RSA was changed, and it keeps us from accomplishing what we have in the master plan, we should bookkeep that.
I'm, I. I would like to have you come to a planning board meeting.
I'll be glad to. As a matter of fact, I plan on coming next week.
Let me finish.
You mean, I don't have to go?
No, I would like to have you come to a planning board meeting and work through regs with us.
Oh, my gosh.
We have been working for a whole year on one section in our reg book. And, and it ain't easy.
I'm not, I am not looking to criticize. I'm not, all I'm trying to do is to get some more involvement on the master plan, that's all.
Well, I think we can make that happen, you know.
I, I think we can, but I, I think we got to be cautious. Because you can work volunteers to death with a statement like that. I mean, every time something.
I think you're misinterpreting what I'm saying.
Okay.
Ken, I thank Bob and all the people in the planning board for all the hard work they did.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, ready to say it?
If the chair will let you.
Dave Cedarholm with the planning board and the newly established Town Center Vision Committee. And I just would like to encourage the board of selectmen to take this bar chart. And as we work forward with the Town Center Visioning Committee, come up with some figures. We've got some great budgetary numbers from AG Architects, they're, they're CIP-worthy numbers. Let's, as we craft the warrant articles moving forward, since we're now in the deliberative session, let's come up with some numbers, figure out what the bond payment would be, and how those fit in this bar chart. So we, so when we're in the deliberative session, we can say, okay, so how does, if we don't do anything, this is what the CIP looks like. If we, if we move forward with this plan, we want to move forward with, this is what happens. And it's going to be, you know, the top may be a little sliver. It's not going to, you know, because they're bond payments, they're not going to be, it's not going to be this huge jump in one of these bars. And I think that, I think that will be really valuable moving forward and trying to convince the voters, we need to do something. We've spent ten-plus years putting together a Town Center Plan, and we have worthy information to really move forward with something now.
Thank you.
And I think Bob will help us do that.
Don't everybody jump up. We've all got minutes of the meet, last meeting emailed to you. And at least is the budget committee forcing that, will it be in motion to accept them or modify them?
I will second accept.
Okay, that's actually unanimous. The board of selectmen, the figure there is. Oh, yeah, don't forget your thumb drive. But they worked. Ready to go. Everyone's using now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
So. I don't know, you want me to sign this?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
So that was our last department, right?
Yes, our last meeting with the board of selectmen.
That was two of us.
That's correct. We're on your own now.
Now what do we do?
Well, your next one's on the fifth, which is next Tuesday.
Will you be here, Scott?
What?
Will you be here?
Yep.
Oh, five.
Yep, oh, five, and then fourteen.
Internal budget discussion. So we discuss all that we just heard?
Yes.
And we decide what we want to do?
Do we decide what we recommend to the?
What we want to recommend to the board.
Okay. So that one's just us, not them?
You're with us.
We all sat.
We're all sat.
I didn't attain the motion of adjournment. So, is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor. Nice job.